I plead rise and the pledge of allegiance and main standing for home and public. A pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Now, moment of silence, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I understand Mr. McGrath, who is our new director of the community services board, scheduled to give us a presentation this afternoon, is respectfully requested to come to the meeting this evening. So if I could suggest to the board that we move item F1 to this evening, probably right before the public hearing, just so Mr. McGrath might be able to go first this evening. He'll be on his way. Do you want to change your hand?
No problem here. Anyone have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just bring to the board's attention that it did list a closed meeting topic for litigation related to Brad versus Board Supervisors as well as tower infrastructure sightings. It's not clear to me that the board has an interest in or in to close meeting for one or either of those items. If the board does not want to, I guess it would be appropriate to clear that up at this point.
Well, we have it on for another old business at the seven o'clock meeting. Is there something you'd like to discuss in closed session regarding the Brad case?
No, not that I'm aware of. Just not knowing what the board is going to want to discuss relative to that case, I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity, so that was very important.
Yeah, I request that we cancel the closed session on the, for litigation to the Brad case. What about the tower infrastructure? I think we still need to have that or not, so if you don't have it, that's your call. Considering some of the latest developments that Mr. Curry has brought forward, I think we perhaps should discuss it.
In closed session?
I think so. Suits me fine. So, we're stretching the litigation part? Right.
Mr. Chairman, all the commotion, that will be passed to the agenda after amendments.
Does that amendment include the removal of item number two under IP public hearings for the seven o'clock meeting, the chapter 30? Oh, you did sure of that as well?
I thought I would just make a statement regarding in case the public did show, so they know what's happening. But we will not have the public hearing.
Okay. One more second, those changes.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed in favor. Motion carried. How about the approval of the minutes?
The agenda includes three sets of minutes, recent sets of minutes for board consideration. The April 23rd, which is the budget and tax rate public hearings, April 30th, which was a budget work session, and then May 7th, which was your regular meeting.
There was one minor typo that I can't recall. It was using a, a article when it went maybe, but the minutes were accurate. And the commotion, do we approve all three of them?
I didn't have any changes to the 2018 minutes. Have a second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed in favor? Motion carried.
Extension. Next on the agenda are a series of back minutes. There are 11 sets for consideration. These were sent to the board about a month ago for your consideration. These are items that were prepared by Ms. Garten, and then subsequently given before passing to the board prior to January 23rd, 2017, March 13th, March 20th, March 31st, April 3rd, May 1st, May 5th, May 8th, a second meeting on the, which was your budget public hearing, June 5th, and June 30th, all 2017.
Well, I personally, in my usual mode of procrastination, put it off until yesterday afternoon, at which point my board docs did not work. So I didn't get a chance to read them, at least all of them, so I'm not prepared to vote on them. I don't know, it's very full disclosure, I don't think I've read all of them either. So, we'll kick it. We'll meet next meeting, I promise you I'll get it done next time. I didn't want to do the first one, I said that.
I didn't get through them all, I mean, I read them when they did 30s, 35 pages.
All right, we'll bring that forward and have that next agenda.
Thank you. Now, I'm feeling guilty.
That's, that's a big batch altogether.
Okay, we're out to public comment. If there's anyone wishing to comment on any subject, please raise your hand and give us your name and the district you're in. Time to let your speech for eight to five minutes. And a clear public comment, open. You should fill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fill, open. Many months ago, the taxpayers of Rappahannock County, what you call a sound system, and you each were afforded a microphone, and may I suggest that it be a worthwhile public expense, if you would use them, please. Microphones work about one fist away, and if they're going to be heard in the back of the peanut gallery here, may I suggest your proximity to the microphone is critical. Thank you. A little bit later, you'll be considering a golf driving range. I have yet, and I don't hear everything that goes on in the county, of course, but I've never heard a flame that we need a golf driving range to support our tourism-based economy in this county. May I suggest that your consideration for this application will be heard tonight be based upon existing ordinances and existing planning documents. The planning commission has approved it, but may I suggest that the comprehensive plan does not include a golf driving range? Please, we don't need it.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Ruth Welch. I'm from Stonewall District, and I think we're going to have a discussion later presented by Mr. Tony Van Acker of RLEP about our dark sky and getting our county park designated as a dark sky park.
Mr. Welch, can you come up here and use the microphone, so?
I'm sorry.
Just to make sure that it gets on the safe and swell, for people that can't be here.
Hi, Paula. I'm a member of the Rappahannock County recreational facilities authority, otherwise known as the Park Board, our tiny 7.3 acre park just around the corner, and we've been working really hard on several initiatives for the park, and later this afternoon, you're going to hear from one of our newest members, Tony Van Acker, who's also on the board of RLEP, and he's been working really hard on getting our park designated as a dark sky park. Now, I guess a lot of you know or don't know that Rappahannock County is one of the few places in the East Coast where you can actually see the Milky Way in the summertime. So we've been working with Mr. Van Acker on designating the park a dark sky park, and so far we have letters of support from our park board and also from the businesses of Rappahannock, and we're looking today to get your support. Again, this is just going to be a designation as a dark sky park, and Mr. Van Acker, I'm sure can answer a lot of your questions, but I wanted to introduce this as a member of our park board that we support this wholeheartedly. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Doc Nash. I'm from Hampton District, and we've got a backup bill on his view on golf courses. Here also to remind the board supervisors that the planning commission still has not come up with a comprehensive plan. As an attorney, the only way that you get a real idea of what the county is supposed to be doing is to have it well-written, well-breathed, and, and a comprehensive plan that's had hearings on it, and then, and then you proceed to zoning amendments that complement that comprehensive plan. It's sad to say, but this county has not had a comprehensive plan for well of Rappahannock area. I don't know if anybody here was to hear when the last time a comprehensive plan was reviewed or revised. The Virginia law says you shall revise and review the comprehensive plan every guy hears. It doesn't say if you're not lazy, do it, or if you want to do it, it says you shall, and that gives, gives all of you that want to change the zoning laws guidance, guidance from the comprehensive plan. After the Virginia constitution, Virginia state law, Virginia zoning code, the comprehensive plan is next in line of what you guys are supposed to be doing. You're not elected to get here and do whatever you want, you're in here to enforce the law. And that's all it is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else care to speak? Yes, second.
I submitted my public comments by email. I submitted my public comments by email today, and I do support Paige Glenny. The reason is, I feel he would have the least economic interest in the decisions that he makes. He's not a real estate agent, he's not a this, he's not a that, and I think it's important that we get people who look at things that way on planning commission. And I also recommend that we resurrect the first nomination by Christine. She was elected. It's been tradition that a person who is running, is the elected official for the district, makes the nomination. I have nothing against Mr. Benioff, but putting him back in after he's been elected out, and Christine's been elected, seems to me a slap in the face to voters. And the person she did nominate is a trained planner, he was on the board, I've heard him in public comments, I was very impressed with him. That's my recommendation. I do not support changing the zoning laws to bring in a golf driving range. I do not think it belongs in residential or agricultural zoning. It's too loud, it's too boisterous, it's too commercial, it doesn't fit in, nobody would want to live next to one. You already gave Mr. Miller special consideration to bringing a golf course, and I think, you know, if this, if you let this happen, what's next? I don't think you should let this go through. So if I'm not here tonight, it's hard for me to run back and forth that far. That's my comment for the public hearing, that I don't support changing zoning laws. And I also submitted two lists of things that are going to be coming up. On if CWS tries to come back in, the reasons to deny the tower was many, and also the reasons to locate a public safety tower away from human habitation, and I don't mean a few hundred feet, I mean a few miles. I'm not quite sure where this location is. It's near Woodward Road because I haven't been up to this location on, I think it's Stillwater or something like. It may be too close to Woodward Road. I mean, the closer you are, the more you're affected, that's it. And I think it should be only a pageant tower. And I think, if you keep my emails and read them, everything is in there about my comments. The one thing I forgot, I left out, is that the people on Woodward Road already have broadband. They don't need PIMAP broadband. They have DSL broadband through Verizon or Comcast broadband through cable, both of which work well. So we don't need PIMAP broadband up there. It's not like it's a desert and nobody can get broadband. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak?
My name is Mike Mahoney, and I'm from Hampton District. I did not intend to stand up, but I needed a little per comment about including people who sell real estate for a living for a consideration. I think that appropriate for me to stand up and say, I think that's foolish. The real estate agents in this county by the large are among, are leading supporters of keeping this county moving up to speed. And in the case of Rick Coller, whose name is under consideration, he has been working for as long as I've known him, which is almost 30 years, as a supporter of this county in many, many different ways. So there are reasons to consider one or the other, but please take the fact that he's a real estate agent off the list of considerations, please.
Anyone else? Got a light color, one states. Yes.
This is my first, first time making a comment, so I'm assuming this is the place, the time to do it, which is, my name's Martha McIntosh, I'm in the Hampton District, and I wrote to each board member for my support for Paige Glenny. And the reason, I do not know personally, but I have seen and noted the actions that he takes to try to keep the commissions and boards accountable and back to the comprehensive plan. The gentleman that spoke earlier, I'm afraid I missed the first part, but I think there needs to be someone who continues to press the issues around codes and zoning that go directly back to the comprehensive plan. And when you don't have a structure which you can use to make those kinds of judgments, it then becomes an individual process, which then gets away from what the codes and the laws request. So I see him as a very good advocate for those types of situations, and I do think he gives diversity to the group that might not be there with another choice. Thank you.
Anyone else here? Anyone else? Okay, second.
I just wanted to respond that a few years ago, we had a broadband forum in this county, and it was only for wireless, only wireless was discussed, and one of the big sponsors was the Real Estate Association. So it's not that they don't have agendas, if they think something will sell the property, they're going to bring it in, and include self-loan towers and things like that, which some people may support, but do we want to be a menace, I don't think so. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? Put a clear public comment, it's closed. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I would just, in terms of the comprehensive plan, yes, it is, we do by law need to have a comprehensive plan. There is no law that we need to follow the comprehensive plan. It's not quite as important as, as some of this feedback is. And it, just as my personal observation, I believe that there's going to be very little change in the new comprehensive plan. It's not quite finished. Mr. Frayton knows a lot more than I do about this, because he was on the planning commission for all those years, and that there's some update in terms of demography and population of towns, that kind of stuff. There's very little change in all this time, and people seem to talk to the supervisors like, you guys get on, get on the stick and, you know, create a comprehensive plan. It, it's on the planning commission. We just approve it after it's finished, and so we haven't had a chance to really approve a councilor plan because we haven't received it from the planning commission. So that's, that's about it, but it's kind of a misconception, it's like people talk about the law. There is no law that we need to follow the comprehensive plan, we just need to review it and approve it. Thank you.
Okay, then it's my pleasure to introduce to you the new chief superintendent of the school system, Dr. Chandler Rensley. Congratulations.
Appreciate that introduction. It's such a relief on Friday to graduate with my graduates and actually defend my dissertation that very same day, so that was wonderful, so. Now that that's over, wait till you see what we do next year. But May was a very, very incredibly busy month for our CPS, all the end-of-year testing and ceremonies, sports celebrations, and then of course culminating in our graduation ceremony this past Friday. The month kicked off with Teacher Appreciation Week, May 7th through the 11th. The parents, community, and administration truly went above and beyond to make sure that teachers felt, felt the love across the board. That was wonderful. Throughout the month, we had many activities, events, and ceremonies, including, I'll just list quite a few of them here, the high school band and elementary school band and choral concerts were held on May 16th and May 23rd respectively, and the concert at the high school was especially wonderful with the, that featured Colonel John Bourgeois in the Kid Pan Alley, which was wonderful. And then the elementary concert was, the first time I had seen them do this, but they integrated art into the concert, so the art teacher had all of the students in the whole elementary school design artwork that actually was inspired by the musical selections that the elementary band did put on, which was wonderful, and those were on display as they were playing those selections. It was really neat. The Relay for Life event in Bus Pull was held at the elementary school on May 19th, and Gold's Gym defended their championship. A really neat, disgusting presentation at the elementary school. Reptile World brought snakes and other creatures to the elementary school kids, it was wonderful for them, but I didn't want to get near that. School volunteer reception was held on May 24th, where we recognized all of those who gave time and energy to supporting the schools, and there were about nearly 200 names that we read up and recognized that day. That's amazing. We had rescheduled some of those dare day activities because, you know, all that money. So they had a fun-filled field day on May 25th, and got to participate in many of those events. A beautiful bachelorette service was held on May 27th, where our seniors gave the light to the juniors, and it was just a beautiful ceremony as always. Our littlest Panthers got to share their learning with their proud parents through special songs at the pre-K graduation on May 29th. We held a special coffee with the counselor at the high school on May 29th as a way for parents of our rising eighth graders, our schools go K-7 and then A-12, so, so our rising eighth graders get an idea from the counselor what to expect, what transitioning to the high school is like, and get that individualized attention. We had award ceremonies at both schools that celebrated the achievements of students on May 30th. Seventh grade graduation, the last day of school, were both coincided on the last day, on May 31st, and that was followed by our end-of-year cookout and celebration, where we recognized years of service of all our staff members and the achievements of staff. Then of course, our graduation ceremony on June 1st, even with no parking and no AC, I would still say it was a fantastic ceremony, but it, we were worn, but it went very, very well. We had extra attention to parking, we had shuttling services with school buses, and we got on time. We started that ceremony on time. My team was absolutely wonderful, they had cooling cloths that they were handing out to people, and waters, we had water for everybody, tried to keep it as cool as possible. Let's see, in the world of sports, Brett Mitkif was selected as first-team bull run district pitcher in baseball, and Abby Taylor, second-team bull run district goalkeeper in soccer. Rachel Weghurst earned the region 1B championship in the bull run district track meet for her performance in the 1600 and 3200 meter, and that qualified her for states. And we've been trying to get that state track meet to happen, but the rain's really made that difficult. And Haley Borton finished third in discus in shot put, which also qualified her for states. Our softball is traveling, as we speak, to the other Rappahannock for the state quarter final event. Go Rapp tonight! And a quick update on our facilities projects, U.S. authorized us to go ahead and reallocate that $150,000 in the current FY18 budget, and we are little more than halfway through, at least on the process of getting all those completed before the summer is out. We had that little bit of a hiccup with our gym AC unit that was not on that original list, it was on the list to be looked at, so that added a bit of a chunk to our H-back processes that we'd love to get taken care of this summer kind of have to, so those units were at war. So that puts us, I feel like we will have about $50,000 at end of year to help put towards some of this, now that we're looking at those monies, but that still puts us at a balance of about $100,000, $100,775 to be exact, if we're going to take care of all of those that we put on that list, including the gym. But we've gotten done quite a bit, including the cooling tower at the elementary, which was the baby, the water treatment system, all redone, so, these facilities, after we get this done, I promise it's going to be better, it's looking a lot better. And then we can really get to the aesthetics and making those, doing the remods and making the place look much better. But thank you so much again in supporting those projects, and it's really helped us to get that worked on, that we really need to keep our facilities functional. And our one year one. Yes, all good. Any questions?
Good year. Congratulations.
Very nice, very nice. Okay, introduction, here we move down. F2, presentation of people from Incorporated, where's Mr. Robert Dolson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time on the agenda this afternoon. I'm Rob Dolson with the Department of Operation, Community Action Agency. I bring with me a copy of our most recent annual report. I think it's got an interesting document, got a lot of good information in it, it's got a summary of our budget. We had financially, we had approximately $15 million in revenues and about the same amount in expenses for the year. This is a snapshot as of June 30th, 2017, so this is what we looked at like June 30th, 2017. June 30th, 2017. The financials are for that fiscal year that ended that day. You see excerpts from our audit report. We had auditors, these days call an unmodified opinion, clean report. No questions asked, no disallowances, no findings of any kind. Perhaps a roster of the members of our board of directors. You may know that Crystal Hale was noted as your representative to our board. She was a good representative. We're happy to have Jennifer Parker as your representative to our board. I can tell that she's very interested in being deeply engaged, and I think will be an excellent board member. So we thank you for that. During the course of the year, here in Rappahannock County, we really concentrated on micro enterprise development, the partnership that we have with you, Culpeper County and Fall Creek County, to provide training, technical assistance to people who are interested in starting or expanding small businesses, and then some loan money for people to borrow. During the course of the year, here in Rappahannock County, we worked with eight people who wanted to start businesses. We provided training, technical assistance to them. Of those eight, we're still working with, I think, three. We had a couple that decided not to move forward with their idea, which sometimes is a good outcome. We had one that determined that they were bankable and were able to go to commercial bank and borrow funding for their business, and we financed one business startup here in the county. We also provided financial literacy training to individuals, primarily focusing around personal finance needs. Currently, we're working with Jennifer Parker at Department of Social Services, and I've been having conversations about the development of a home visiting program to work with children who are at risk of foster, included foster care, to do family development work and help them stay out of foster care. We're also having conversations with the Childcare Learning Center about a partnership to develop some early childhood education here in Rappahannock County. Both of these things are fairly long-term projects. It could be a year at least before we're able to start serving people in those initiatives. But that's what we're working on here right now. I would welcome any feedback that you have, any suggestions or things that you would like to see us working on. If you're not, any kind of feedback at all would be very helpful, even today, or if you're like me and think about it just after I walk out of the room, then you can reach me at the contact information on the back of the annual report. And you can also give your input through Jennifer, and I'm sure she'll get to you. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Well, my only observation here is, in terms of getting businesses started, I would recommend businesses other than the production of alcohol, because ironically, a lot of the people that are in poverty can be out there as a result of alcohol abuse.
Yes, sir.
And it's like, you're lending money to people to start brewing.
Yeah, that, those are the people in Culpeper County, but your point is well taken. We, the business that we financed here was a business that has developed an innovative pruning chair for gardeners to, it's more like, prune. So we'll bear that in mind.
So, Rob, where do you conduct your classes through micro enterprise, small business development courses? Where do you do that here in the county?
We've done that at the public libraries. There may be more places than that, but that's one site that I know that has done that.
Are those just like one-day seminars, or is that a series of courses?
Usually they're more like four-day things that are a couple hours a day for four days. We don't attempt to teach people in debt business management, but to let them know the issues that they need to consider in planning a business. So we get to the highlights. We call it business basics. So just so that they know that if they hire people, they're going to have payroll taxes, they're going to have taxes from the IRS, then they have licensing requirements, and they have insurance needs, they need to have a marketing plan, they need to research their competition, those kinds of things. So it's, I think it's eight hours total is the server cost. Oh, no. We need to do another one, and we need to promote it so that...
How many people do you typically have in attendance?
It varies. Eight to 20 people. We wouldn't want more than 20 in a class.
Do you do it just for Rappahannock, or is this, you're talking a class that encompasses all of this?
We have them around different sites in the region, and then Culpeper and Warrenton ain't here in Rappahannock also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, finance.
I guess I'll... And Mr. Nick has prepared the normal reports for you as well as additional chart that I discussed and introduced to you during the budget process as well as last month. So we'll start with the cash balance. You can see in FY 2018, the cash balance remained robust, and we have really no concerns. Presenting the information this way allows you to see where we're likely to fall our low cash month if you compare where we are relative to the other years. So it's very likely that when we get to the low cash month of September, that you'll have considerable fund balance. We do have some large capital projects that have been delayed, including radio system. The Harris contract payable will not come due until the system is ready to be used, and that's over by a tower in Fall Creek right now. So that cash is set into the bank, getting ready to pay out. So those are some of the reasons why you see cash a little bit higher than it has been in the past. Going into this, cash balance, of course, is your revenues and your expenditures. Revenues for FY 18 were ramping down, one month left in the year. It looks like we will close the year a little below forecast revenue. That's okay, because expenditures are predicted to close the year well below budget. So between two, we will be adding additional dollars to the fund balance for FY 18. And I think we probably knew that would happen as we went through the FY 19 budget, and we went and found some of those dollars and then allocated them. I noted to you at the past meeting that the one area of concern that I have is the refuse budget area that is still a concern. We will very likely overspend that appropriation, and I will bring you the transfer at your next meeting to clean that up. The expenses there are significant. I've reached out to our contractors and asked them for a meeting, and we're still trying to get that lined up. Had an insult injury in that area. Their equipment failed recently while they're pulling waste from the flat wood, and so they are having to take some alternative methods. We're still trying to work with them to make it as smooth as possible, but their one truck that they have to pull the waste out of our pits buckled in half. Fortunately, it was on our site, not driving around down the road at 60 miles an hour. So that's, probably we'll take some patience from our citizens until that's straight. But hopefully, we'll be able to get with them and work through some of our contract issues, and we'll see where we go from that coming this summer. But overall, cash is great. Revenue's a little low, but expenses are quite low, and we will end the year by adding money to the fund balance. Have it answer your questions.
No questions? All right, then I go to accounts payable.
There are, as usual, there are two sets of accounts payable in your packet for approval. The May 15th mid-month for a total of $10,178.33, and then today's for $379,502.82.
Need a motion? It hasn't quieted today.
I'll put this in the form of a motion. If you're, tell me that we paid the accounts payable.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Very good.
The next item on the agenda is supplemental appropriation for your VJCCA grant. This is funded from the state. When the budget was prepared nearly a year ago, the amount appropriated, amount budgeted and net appropriations line was $9,074. Well, the state actually provided us $9,673. So this item is simply appropriating the balance so that we can pay up the full amount of state funds that are being brought in. Because this item is in a department that has very few lines, it's not easy to transfer as we would in other areas to make up for a slight difference. So just for cleanup, I'm suggesting you do the supplemental appropriation. I've also included a random list of supplemental appropriations, and it just shows that you have not exceeded the 1% since your last budget public hearing. So the additional is $599.
And the V, as Virginia juvenile, what is the V, what does it stand for?
It's had to ask. I couldn't rattle it off.
It's got something to do with the sheriff's office, right?
Well, no, it has to do with our community corrections. It's a grant program, and so this group works regionally. We are funding this amount in Fall Creek, and Culpeper has a different amount.
Right, right.
And then they will work through different allowable programs to help divert our youth from getting into further trouble or...
But this is still coming in?
Yeah, this is state money that's actually already in our general fund bank account, which is going to make sure that we can pay up the full debt. The budget line is in the agenda packet. If anyone wants to make a motion to approve this supplemental appropriation.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. To, I'm not sure how to word that.
A supplemental appropriation of $599 to budget line.
To budget lines after...
104, yeah.
02, 03, 52, 04, 0000. One more discussion.
That works.
Have a motion. On the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item.
The next item is, and I'm requested by the sheriff and Ms. Carter. I see the sheriff is here, and I guess we'll speak. Do you have him? No? I can, I'll introduce it. Ms. Carter, now I'm a coordinator, came to me letting me know that there is a good opportunity to purchase the tremble GPS units that she needs for the 911 program, which is funded from the 911 GIS grant for dispatch that we received from the state. This is just part of the overall program. There are also GIS implementation in dispatch, and that's a lot of additional work. She provided to me late last week contracts for all of that information, but I did not contemplate that in the agenda. What she's asking for is purchase approval from the purchasing ordinance to go ahead and make these purchases for the GPS units, because they exceed the $10,000 purchasing threshold in the purchasing ordinance. The tremble units are sold through a vendor network where there's an approved vendor for each state, so it's a proprietary purchase. You can't compete it within the state. I suppose you could try to find some alternate unit other than a tremble unit, but these are standard units, as I understand. So she's asking for board permission to purchase these items in FY 18 that we can take credit for. I believe it's a $3,000 reduction in price that is only valid through the unit.
Is this a good idea, Connie?
Yes, sir.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion. We're authorized to purchase of the tremble GPS units for the 911 coordinator. Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second.
There's a contractual obligation element to this as well, to this vote? There's contracts for this item?
This is really just a purchase off a standard state contract type thing. There will, we will be back to probably your next meeting with several other parts of this overall $200,000 budgeted project, of which $150,000 is grant. And that will include purchasing servers, GIS software, and then work with a firm to help us implement the whole system. Those also, I think, are on standard contracts, but we'll definitely make sure that we can return them to use them first.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Next item, another one.
When we spoke last meeting, we spoke at the last meeting about the supplemental, that's a long preparation, the reallocation of funds for the schools, the $150,000 that was budgeted in the schools for debt service. The board saw fit to allow the schools to use that for their critical capital needs, as the superintendent was recently speaking about the coding. I noted at that meeting that there may be the opportunity to also allow the schools to reallocate $49,000 of funding that was appropriated to them for the purposes of the SR position at the elementary school. Typically, what was intended was the schools would have transferred those dollars back to the sheriff's office, so the sheriff could make payroll for that SR deficit. Now that we're in the next and last month of the fiscal year, we know that due to staff turnover, that the sheriff's budget does not require those $49,000 to make payroll. As a matter of fact, she will end the year with a rather significant amount of expense unspent, even before that transfer. That allows the board to make these $49,000 available to the schools for some other purpose, which would be presumably capital, to help them with some of these other issues like the AC and gym that apparently is available for graduation. I did speak with the sheriff about it, and after working through the numbers, she did endorse this, recognize that it was not needed for her to make her contemplated expenses, and you'll hear from her in the next item as well. So if you're in the mind to do this, I think, a simple motion, making it clear that the schools, that you believe it's appropriate for the schools to use these dollars. Technically, as we talked about last time, if the budget and funds are in their budget, they can do what they want with them, but we would otherwise expect them to return to the general fund balance.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Question?
Actually, it's really kind of more for the superintendent. So we have a letter here, I guess Shannon dated May 2nd, talks about a number of your HVA...
It talks about a number of your HVAC and water treatment system capital needs to the tune of about $265,000, a little bit more. You said that some of this has already been addressed and taken care of. In this $49,000, would go toward additional items or toward items on this list?
All on this list, including the one that's not, which was the gym AC unit. I just wanted to mention for graduation.
So, just, I mean, most of these are HVAC related. You've got real burger. That's not, that's not related to that? Honeywell, I'm sorry, Honeywell. They've given us a report. Is this just equipment that's at the end of its useful life? I mean, I can remember the gym being an issue, you know, back when I was on the school board and here we are again with the gym.
That system, that's why we did not want to rush to, we had the equipment out a day before it came in, but I didn't want to rush into it before we got down to really what the issue was diagnosing the problem. We originally had thought that one of the storm surges had caused the equipment to malfunction, but our technician cannot certify that. Since we signed on with Honeywell, two of those compressors are actually covered under our comprehensive services, so that greatly brought down the cost. And we're trying to get insurance company to help us out with some of that too. So the total cost, it looks like it's going to be about $12,500 to fix that whole AC unit, which at first started around 50. So we're really excited about that. But yes, been, HVAC has been a mess with both facilities the whole year and that's what we're trying to fix.
Is it just because these units are at the end of their useful life or is it because it was all sort of cash work together?
Our schools were, like I had said before, I tell that story that's funny but not funny, that our technician wants to bring apprentices in because we have about every HVAC system you can have in a single facility and you could train a lot of people on. It takes a very high level of skill and expertise to be able to handle those systems and make sure the animations and the pneumatics and all those controls can work together. And I don't think we've had that level of experience, which we do now. Honeywell is, you know, a large company and they do have that expertise. And our technician is absolutely wonderful. So we're working on that. But the balance of all that work right now, after all those things considered, I'm at about $100,000, $100,755 left of work to do. So that $49,000 would go a lot, long way to help and I think I can take care of what's left out of end of year, I think. It just depends on these last state revenues coming in and everything, but we're right at it. So that would help a whole lot.
So where does that push on purchasing buses then?
That's what we did figure that into our end of year calculation, so with our buses purchased, yes.
Okay, so you're buying two buses at the end of the year?
Yes, yes, sir.
And if, I guess you don't know which year of the year?
Unless this doesn't work out, then I'll not get back one. We'd love to get on schedule, yes.
So I'm sorry, just talking, last question, following all through the math here. Of this, I guess, about 275 now, if you add the HVAC for the high school in there, how much of this would be taken care of if you hit the $49,000 and the $150,000?
That list was over half of it, so all the water controls, the cooling tower, the HVAC. I had, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the whole list with me. I thought I had it in my notebook, but I can send you, I surely can send you everything that we've done and the few things that are left to do with that.
But you're saying, you're saying about half of this is taken care of? So you've got another $130,000 out there, it needs to be?
$100,000.
$100,000?
And that includes the gym unit, yes.
Is it, I guess, dated, again, it's dated May second, this is probably brought out, so is this, is this information dated '65 as no longer a working figure?
Well, the 49 comes through, I think, now that we've extended, I think we'll have end of year to take care of it, so it doesn't look like I'll need that.
So this is the same letter that was intermed and filed forward?
Right, but now we're talking 49, but this says 65, so some of the work is done. And I just wonder if this is even relevant anymore?
Yeah, I put it in there to see if you had a longer list of items total.
All three of those are relevant to the price package.
Yeah, I think there's been some, the ground has changed some with the inventory of gym. But ultimately, with the $150,000 in this 49, the board will be providing just under $200,000 of capital for the schools to tackle this list. And then the schools will be searching inside their budget to bridge the gap. As we go through the summer, I think we still need to be looking at overall capital picture and prioritizing projects across the county, schools now, schools. As we think about your cash balance and your fund balance and how those dollars should be spent, they get to be spent for one time for one purpose and what are the highest and best use of that? But these critical capital items are probably really high up there and if you make an appropriate, allow them to allocate these now, they can jump on them during the summer while the kids are not in the building, get these issues off the list, hopefully for several years.
So your intent is to get a lot of this and not all of this over the summer?
We'll get it all done in the summer.
Okay, can we, you let the board know when you might have sort of a peak time of activity of this work so that you might be able to kind of see some of, I mean, I'm just curious as to, not that I know what the heck I'd be looking at, but...
We either, it's really much.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's a time in the middle of the eye.
It started after May, so we're doing projects just about every day. It's just when we say stop and we know that we have left, what's going on. So just calling about this and we're Robin Hall, the facilities director, and she can direct me what's going on at what point.
So it's very likely that they will have projects midstream down to the third. So we'll have to figure out where we are on those projects and the school will be coming to us and asking the board to re-appropriate the balance of those ones that are left unspent for these $200,000, perhaps some other remaining unspent dollars in school into FY19. So, you know, they have a contract, they've ordered the air conditioner and it comes in on June 20th and it's not installed yet, then we'll have to figure out how much is unspent and that and that will have to then be appropriated into 19. Same dollars, just have to be with the right budget here.
So what would this, what would this look like in the way of a motion?
I think to be clear, just simple allow the schools to re-allocate the $49,000 originally intended for SRO for use for this critical capital needs.
If it is from a vote, I think that's a motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
I think we ought to spend $49,000 by consensus.
Pardon?
I don't think we should spend $49,000 by consensus. We know that the governor, who's tracked up with the whatever we're doing.
The next item on the agenda serves, a question of the sheriff. She is here.
Good afternoon. As Mr. Curry said, I was looking at turning $150,000 back into the county in my salary portion of my budget. I spoke with Mr. Curry and agreed to do the, return the $49,000 to the school to help them out. But the reason why I'm here today, even after turning that back in, I'm still going to be returning a hundred plus thousand to the county out of my salary portion of my budget. So I'm here to request that you, permission for me to give each of my full-time employees a $2,000 bonus. We've been pretty forehanded this year. People even go to other jurisdictions for more money. So I think this is just a thank you to them for staying here and devoting themselves to this county. So I'm asking for a $2,000 bonus for each of my employees. It would not include me, but it would include all of my full-time employees, which would come to a total of $36,000, which would still be, I would still be returning between $65,000 and $70,000 out of my salary portion of the budget.
Just let me make sure I clarify, I assume that, you know, your budget could also pick up fighting, or sheriff fighting. It'll be a little bit of that.
When would, when would they receive the bonus at the end of this, this tour or at the end of the calendar?
Is this something we need to vote on? Does the money already in the salaries and you can, you know, manage your department? Is this something we need to have a vote on or?
Well, if the, that's not entirely clear to me and what you've done in the past. What I'm used to, you have approved salaries for staff, approved supplements based on longevity and various other factors. But your constitutional officer and other department heads, if they save money or just empower to redistribute that within your budget. Now, I suppose those decisions are for the board to make and so this action you take here could be interpreted by the sheriff or others that if there are dollars left in the budget, they could be reallocated to salary. I wouldn't recommend that. I would keep control of that.
But these are salary dollars, correct?
They are. So do you, you don't necessarily want to encourage a, an agency head or department to hold vacancies open so that they can provide bonuses to themselves for others? But if, if they are open because turnover's been hard, competition's been fierce with the state lease, people have had to work extra?
That's my thought process.
Then, then it, you know, it may be a situation that makes sense. You will hear from others, there's haves and have-nots and you'll just have to hear that.
I don't think this is something you have to vote on, but because of the dollar amount, I want the permission so that there won't be anything in the future. Thank you.
If I understand this correctly, you've had, because of gaps in staffing or whatever, you've, you've got some extra money left over in salaries?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean that we have accumulated a large amount of comp time?
We have comp time, yes. We try to keep it knocked down, but it does accumulate.
Should we use some of this to address that? Not, not so much what you're thinking of allocating for the bonus, maybe the rest of the money to somehow do something to knock that? I, I remember just before I came on the board, there was a horrendous problem with comp time over there and the board had to make a big payment. I'd hate to see a situation like that, you know, get away from us. If we get paid towards that now, get some of that down somehow.
We try to keep that knocked down myself, the major, the captain or the investigator try to cover shifts so that we can keep our comp time knocked down. So this is basically, I'm asking just for a bonus.
So I would just say if, whatever goes unspent during FY18 from the sheriff's department budget and every other budget will fall to the fund balance. And so if there is a comp time issue and you prepare that accounting and take a look at it, you could appropriate dollars from the fund balance at some time in the future to do that when you compare that cost and need with all the other potential costs and needs. So you don't have to do that in June for any reason. You could handle that any time over the summer.
Right, I just didn't want to creep up on, it's like we did the former board. Well, being as they, deputies just went down and put my cattle back in. I'll recognize that we allow the sheriff to give these bonuses and maybe you could send somebody down to feed for me somewhere.
It might be personal interest.
Might want to check defense.
Somebody left a day open. That happens too.
Yeah, we chase horses too, don't we, Ben?
They, they normally just run so far and then wait to come back home. It's, it's the chase.
Is that motion?
I think it's part about feeding for me as well.
I'll have a second with, with your thing attached.
I just have one last question and discussion. So sheriff, I'm wondering, is it, a little, I'm somewhat concerned that this might create an expectation in the future. There's going to be a, it's an explanation that, you know, they've been working hard above and beyond because of shortages and this is, these are, these are bonuses in appreciation there too. I don't know, does it become a recruiting tool or?
There's sort of, there are expectations.
Yeah, okay.
Just a one-time bonus.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
Hang on a second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? I guess you heard that.
Yes, sir.
All right, next item. Planning commission for Paxton District member.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could. In the absence of us having a policy now of how we'll make appointments to planning commission, I try to, try to come up with one that may be powerful through board. It may actually work in the, in the best interest of the county. These appointments are for four years and our code, our county code under appointments says that they have to be, should be, members appointed by board, all of whom shall be residents of county qualified by an algorithm experience to make decisions on questions of community growth and development. What I wanted to do and because of staggering commitments, I've been unable to put together the type of process to do it, but I wanted to have, in this, in my case, that a member of the district who has the vacancy, the chairman and county administrator to sit down and interview respective candidates. Though the ad went out and said that they had to apply by June 1st, which, so we had to try and schedule something after that cutoff date, which meant that with 27 inches of rain and other scheduling conflicts, it did not happen. And I think if we could just put this off one more month in the process of the next month, I will schedule that ad hoc committee I just mentioned to meet with two candidates that have applied for the position. We'll interview them and report back to this board if it, if I mean. I think it would be the best interest of the county to do that.
I guess mildly concerned there, Mr. Chairman, is that, that makes two vacancies on the planning commission for the June meeting.
They have a May meeting as well.
No, I think Mr. Bennett was there at the May meeting. Mr. Bennett has done this tomorrow and I think we're going to try to, I'm going to get on to the next agenda item that we may be talking about this for people represented as well. I just don't know, talking about doing a service for the, for the community. You know, we're continuing to delay this, especially since we've had this one for a couple of months now. That's my, that's my only.
We could have made the appointment, but the board changed the way that we were doing things for the last at least 30 years. So in the absence of having a clear path forward, that's what I came up with. And again, the cutoff date was June 1st. I have not had a chance to meet with one of the applicants. Neither have I seen anything that he submitted other than the pencil down application. I haven't had the knowledge of one applicant's background.
No disrespect intended, Mr. Fraser, but that's, I think is exactly almost verbatim as to what we had back in our May meeting, was to need another 30 days so you could talk to another applicant, whether or not the state may not.
Well, we advertised it and the cutoff wound up being June 1st, so this is where we are.
We didn't receive any other paper applications, did we?
No, sir, we did not. But I did not get to meet with the same plan individual. And nothing has been forwarded to me that he said that he, he bargained for an application.
I think the lateness of the ad may have played into both of our situations as well. I think if the ad had been, and I'm not finding fault with anyone by any means, but I do wish that had been run earlier in the month instead of on the 24th. It only left that Thursday, Friday, of course, Saturday and Sunday the offices closed and Monday was a holiday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then, you know, by Wednesday, Thursday, the agenda's out, which really discourages response. So I think with that short window of opportunities soliciting responses, it's really put, really put both these seats sort of at a disadvantage.
Are we trying to do what's best for the community as a whole?
Well, I just, you know, I hear, the amount that I hear comments about how things aren't being done in timely fashion at the planning commission level. Obviously, we've got some very, very important matters that are coming before us and coming before the planning commission and we're... the planning commission, and they now have, they only have two vacancies, which would make very well be a pretty important meeting. I'm just trying to think of what's in the best interest of the community, and we've got it.
It's a weird point. And if you're not going to go by the process that we used to go by, that you enjoy, that every member here except for myself now, Ms. Smith and Lloyd, previous to this appointment, then we have to have some other thing in place.
Well, I think, well, first of all, I believe we do, and secondly, I just find it interesting that we take a lot of criticism on this board for kicking the can down the road from certain members on this board, and here we are kicking the can down the road.
Well, I'll guarantee that. I've brought that out many times.
Part of the reason I'd be inclined to kick down the can down the road is because I do want a representative on the planning commission for my district that I feel will treat the comprehensive plan with the urgency that I feel it needs to be treated with. And again, that's not to skip to the next agenda item, but if that's a priority for the person making the nomination for their district, I think that that should, that should be a priority for filling that vacancy.
I'm only discussing that.
Yes, I'm, I'm left ahead, I do apologize.
Well, that's all right. I mean, they're obviously related. Jackson District opening has come up much earlier than the Piedmont opening, so I don't know if I would join the two at the hip with the same. I understand we're kind of friendly, I guess, more so than I do my good friend from Jackson. But I'm just one opinion. Don't know how other board members see it.
It's all good and due respect. We've had people from all over the county try to weigh in on this, but very, very few people from my district have supported one or the other. But I think, you know, if you're going to go that route of trying to have some sort of a poll, I think the poll was taken at the last general election. And that's the type of philosophy that the voters in that district voted for, and that has always played an important role in this board until two, three months ago. And trying to write down and keep track of who called and who sent an email and who did what, I think is a very, very poor process to go to because it starts making our planning zoning a popularity contest. And we can be a popularity contest, but planning and zoning should not be. We should have people that are going to roll up their sleeves and work, that don't have to worry about politics and popularity. They're there to do a job, and I think that's what we're looking for.
So, Mr. Fraser, why did you FOIA my list of emails?
To find out, to find out.
People that sent me their page.
You said you had 50 emails, and you included your wife and people that you're taking care of their finances. That's all your list.
Well, I gave you a list of everybody that emailed.
That's fine, but my question, my question, with your chairman, my question is, he's asked a question, and I'm going to clarify the intent here. The intent was to find out who has been making these recommendations. Why would those people's comments or recommendations mean anything if they don't understand our planning and zoning process?
My 50 emails obviously were for both candidates.
What do they stand for?
Well, I don't know. They obviously stand for something important if you're so interested to see what they offer.
If they, now, see, you've got a bend here, and the problem is, you are one that wanted to change the process. And when I asked what was leading you to change the process, you did offend.
I'm not offending Mr. Fraser.
No, you did. You brought it up. I wanted to see, I have a right to see who's contacting you in reference to my appointments. So, it's crazy, you know, I don't have a problem if you want to postpone this another month, but I do think that we already have a lot of committees, and I think the last thing we need is another committee. Well, this wouldn't be an actual committee. It's just an ad hoc committee, if it doesn't make a recommendation. Yeah. And so, the problem, a committee that's appointed by the board becomes a board, and therefore subject to all the FOIA restrictions and needs agenda, needs minutes, it's cumbersome. Yeah, those committees don't have any. Right. So, if you want to put it off another month, that's fine, but. Well, that's all I asked for, and it definitely got off track. Well, you also want to create a committee, which I don't agree with. But if you want to put it off for another month, that's fine for me. Well, I appreciate that. Okay. Let's just do that.
I have a view, it's time to move. Any other discussion? Well, here's more from tax rate adoption.
So, we dispatched H1 and H2, both appointed.
Well, I know we've mostly discussed the Jackson District vacancy, but if we could take the same action on the Piedmont District vacancy, that would be my preference for the same timing reasons as indicated in the Jackson District discussion.
Okay. Is the board desirous of additional ads being posted? Well, you've already got, we're going to have two altogether, right?
It's been advertised in two successive weeks.
Yeah. I would think that would be sufficient.
I would, I would think that it would be sufficient. I do wish that the timing and clarity had been a bit better on the ads, and I know we did review them before that they were published, but the timing with the three-day agenda was not often. I don't feel the need for further advertisement.
Okay. So, we're not going to advertise again, and we're going to vote on it next month. Hopefully, you'll have some interest by then.
And I just want to add, should a board member ask for my input, some side group of people, we've already noted that that decision is reserved for the board, and I'm happy to facilitate, not going to vote or be some tiebreaker among board members on who should be recommended to the full board.
That's probably not appropriate for you to make a recommendation.
But happy to facilitate, to bring people together and help organize.
Well, we don't advertise this again, obviously, or put it away another month.
I haven't had a chance to interview one candidate.
Did we put a hard date on this for July? Could we do this? We owe it to the planning commission to fill these seats. We're not doing our jobs here if we're going to let this thing continue.
We're going to vote on it next month. Vote on it.
We'll need this, it's a.
Yeah, no action taken.
I'm going to have I want.
Right, next item on the agenda are the remaining actions that are needed to follow through the FY19 budget. Always interesting to find out what citizens are. Here's a seat. Okay, so, at the May 7th meeting, the board approved the FY19 budget after several meetings of reviewing and considering drafts and after your public hearing. There's three distinct actions boards need to take each year for their budget. One is to adopt the budget, the second is to appropriate the funds so they can be spent, and the last is to set your tax rates. So, the budget already approved on the 7th, it's your remaining item, so appropriation of the tax rates. There are two documents attached to this agenda item, one being a resolution for appropriating the funds. We discussed at the last meeting about what level the board felt appropriation should be, and you suggested it should be the same as was done in the past at the department level. And you see the resolution lists out each department in the appropriation. And then the tax rate resolution also very clearly spells out that the tax rates you are approving are 67 cents for real estate, which is a two-cent increase, 425 for your tangible personal property, which is the same as last year, 6 cents for your fire levy real estate, which is a one-cent increase, and 20 cents for your tangible personal property for fire levy, which is the same as last year. Also, the tax rate resolution confirms that your $25 per motor vehicle license tax remains in place, as well as the, what was it called, exemption for your volunteer fire and rescue staff with one of their vehicles, also the same as was adopted by the board on April 8th, 2016. So, with that, the two resolutions are in your packet, both needing to be approved for us to appropriate the funds and then set the taxes. So, the total tax rate will be 67 cents. 73. 73 cents, and then total personal property will be 4.52, which is under 4.45. So, I guess we pretty much honor this and discuss this by then. So, I make a motion that we approve these resolutions. I just do one more time. So, if we do, if I do this present, appropriation, if you do appropriation, that's presented.
You made a motion for the resolution to appropriate the funds for the FY budget beginning July 1st, 18, and ending June 30th, 19.
Right.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second, this is roll call vote. Mr. Fraser, Mr. Lozinski, Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
And I also.
The second resolution, before you use that for the tax rates. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we impose the tax rates on real estate, on your personal property, which is very important. This is for calendar year 2018. Tax rates are in calendar year. Calendar year 2018, so it'd be 67 cents for real estate for a quarter, $2.25 for $100 for personal property, for fire levy, 6 cents on 100 percent for real estate, 20 cents on personal property. Is that on your resolution?
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second, this is a roll call vote also. Mr. Penn.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
And I also. Let's take here.
Yes, sir.
Number one. The next item is bank borrowing resolution.
The next item in your agenda packet is related to a borrowing resolution. In the past, the county, as we were looking at the cash flow, the county required the borrowing resolution because in your low cash months, you needed to borrow from the bank in order to make it through those periods. That is no longer the case, and at that time, you had $3 million loan availability, and this FY18 was reduced to $2 million. And Ms. Nick and I are recommending that be reduced to $1 million. Even though it's likely that we won't need it, but if something comes along, a big storm or something like that that pulls on your cash at the wrong time of year, this would allow you to draw from the bank easily to make up that gap. Ms. Nick's here, if there's anything that needs to be added to the discussion, it's very likely we will not borrow money from the bank if this makes it so we can if something comes up.
Well, is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to $2 million and use it?
The thing, we don't think the bank will offer that, given our cash position.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll make a motion. We authorize the borrowing money in anticipation of collection of taxes.
Right. So, basically, we're telling the bank that you will borrow money in.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made second, this is a roll call vote also.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Mr. Lozinski.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
And I also. End of year.
I wanted to have a discussion with the board about your practice over the last, apparently, many fiscal years with how you handle end of year transactions, closing your books from one fiscal year, moving out to the next. Your practice has been to schedule a meeting as close to the end of the fiscal year as you could, June 30th, so that the board could come together, make final transfers and appropriations, and approve the final bills. I'm not aware of other localities that do that, although they may exist. With our modern accounting system in the treasurer's office and available to the other offices, we do a pretty good job of keeping track of what comes and goes and when it comes and goes. So, from an accounting standpoint, any expenses that are attributable to goods or services received before June 30th will prove if they're not spent, paid for before June 30th, those expenses will accrue back to FY18 anyway. The board doesn't have to meet at the end of the year to cut the checks on June 30th in order for those funds to be attributable to FY18. Really, the only difference that the board would see, the public would see, when your cash or your audit comes out, the cash balance versus the liabilities will be a little bit different. So, if you paid out all your money, as much of the money as you could in June 30th, your cash would be a little bit lower and your liabilities, cash would be lower and your liabilities would lower. But then, if you delay and have to be accrued back, then the vote will be a little bit higher because you haven't paid them out yet. So, I guess what I'm saying to you is that I do not believe there's any need to schedule a meeting for the end of the year. We will present to you on July 2nd at your next meeting, a Q run that will include expenses attributable to FY18. Ms. Nick and her office will accrue those to FY18. Those that are attributable to FY19 will apply to 19. I can't imagine there'll be very many expenses on July 2nd that are attributable to FY19, given the timing of the fiscal year, in two days in, and we'll move forward, just like you do every other year, you just don't need the extra meeting. I think in the era of pen and paper accounting, it was probably pretty important to have that end of year.
Since George Washington laid out the town.
Maybe so. That's with your modern accounting system, and it's really just not necessary. Ms. Nick is here, can add to that or confirm for you that I'm not just absolutely crazy, just a little bit crazy.
I don't need a motion.
I just, if for some reason the board vehemently was opposed to changing what you've done over the last several years, we'll schedule a meeting and pay bills at the end of the month, but it really doesn't make any difference if you're paying on June 30th or July 2nd.
Is this going to dock our pay if we miss a meeting?
No.
What about our votes?
Well, you can vote for that, I don't know how well it will be received.
There was that one time, that one meeting, that some crazy stuff happened, and it might be better if we didn't have this meeting.
Just wondering if another truck was going to show up if we didn't have this meeting.
Oh, well, I hope, speaking of trucks, I hope two show up, but I'm not sure if they'll make it here by June 30th or not. Those trucks have been ordered from state contract.
Okay, well, I think it makes sense to go on with the modern world.
One less meeting, one less other minute.
I don't know. I somehow don't feel good with this.
Changes sometimes, though. We'll get through it together. The next item is just a quick update regarding the Wolman versus Lozinski case, and I don't need any action from the board, and the board already has this information, but I thought I thought the public may be interested to know the rest of the story. At the last meeting, there was a significant amount of discussion of how the unpaid legal cost for this case would be handled because VML was not paying for them. But the end of the story is that VML is paying for them, and the letter from VML was sent to the board, and I'm sure you've had a chance to read that. They claim there was a misunderstanding between them and their assigned counsel. That's been straightened out. They do have a reservation of rights, depending on how things go forward and if there were particular acts that clearly are covered by the insurance policy, then they will reserve the right to not pay at some point in the future. But all the expenses through now have been or will be paid up short. I believe they're already paid. That doesn't come through the county's budget because directly from VML to counsel.
All right. Next item, building committee update.
Chairman, members of the board, we did not have any meeting this past month because we didn't have a form. The individuals responsible for that was made by the third member that didn't make it, so we didn't have a form, so there's not much to say of them. I guess some projects are still in process. I would believe that a bricklayer can't get to the work because of all the rain that recently had. I'm sure he had a few jobs he had to finish before he could pull off and move here. I'm sure he hasn't finished his either.
All right. So I have an update for you. Mr. Jenkins and I had a conversation about the brickwork on the steps on the ramp lintels this last week. He told me he was having some trouble getting in contact with the contractor who was awarded the work, and I told him to give the person a deadline of June 15th, and we see some action, and we're moving on with another plan.
Mr. Curry, is there any more? Any need, but sometimes things continue to march forward with respect to the RFP that was discussed, and maybe also anything on the Department of Social Services suggesting renovations? I don't know if there's been any.
All right. So with the RFP, I have been in contact with Electronic Virginia, EBA, registered for that, spoke with the folks there when I ordered the two vehicles, and will work through them when we post the RFP. They said it wasn't an issue to post an RFP there for our architecture and engineering services. I have not pulled that RFP together yet from the scope that you saw last meeting, so that's still in the same spot. What was the other item you asked? Social services. I did hear from Ms. Parker reasserting how important this was and letting me know that they had to close their office one day last month because of this safety concern and disgruntled client at work. So it is important, and we need to continue to push that forward.
So I think we agreed, what, the 3rd Monday of every month? So is it the 18th of June or?
I don't know.
Well, today we're in the 4th, I guess.
18. Is that at 9:30? Yeah, I believe it's 9:00 or 9:30. We'll have to check with your citizen members to make sure they're available. They both had some issues that I reported to, kept them away, so.
Right.
And if they are, that's fine. The rest is for both of them.
So it's, but it'll have an update on the brickwork.
Hope so.
Mr. Chairman, the committee didn't actually get together, but I met with Mr. Curry when we wrote up, we looked at two of the potential sites on Hoover Grove, and I guess, and I didn't get back to Ms. Smith on that, but we went to both sites. We should have a talk about that, I guess, later on, but we have, I thought that the upper site was probably a very good site, but it has some specific challenges as far as access for concrete and other construction equipment. Those are the types of things I think that have to be weighed out in the long run by this forward and by the, by looks at the probation act, which may be minimal, if they appear to be minimal. That's all I have on that.
All right. Next item, Roll Back Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Roll Back Committee has a meeting scheduled for a week from today, the 11th, it's at 7 o'clock, the extension office conference room in the Craver Building. There'll be an agenda that'll come out within the next day, tomorrow, or I think maybe And there'll most likely be a discussion about putting together some type of a final brief report for the board, and most likely disbanding the committee as it's kind of achieved what it was set up to do, it doesn't need to meet, you know, in perpetuity. So just to say for the purposes of this afternoon that there is a meeting on the calendar for next Monday, the 11th.
We did not meet this past month. We were able to finalize, and I guess the board approved the changes going forward to Chapter 30. It was supposed to be scheduled for public hearing tonight because of advertising and deadline mess-up. It's not going to happen if we push it off to July. If there's any other parts of the county code that the board would like us to look at, I guess we could schedule a meeting in the next month and look at that. Right now, I'm not aware of anything that's been a problem happening, Chapter 30.
Let me, I'll just clarify on the advertising. I asked the paper to run the planning commission vacancy ad one month, one week, and then I'll be carrying that in two weeks, and the opposite occurred, and so the paper messed that part up, but I messed up when I reviewed the proof that stated the run date, so.
It's a good thing where we can find some complaint things on this, what I like about you doing here. We found a way to do that.
I'm trying to give you as many opportunities as possible.
I made Mr. Chairman, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Curry, I'm approach the board. It occurred to me while I was on vacation, one of my sleepless nights, that there may be a section E that may be advisable in 30-4, and if you're going to have a meeting, if you let me know, I'd like to talk to you about it. Essentially, the way I read C and D, it could be construed to prohibit certain types of future action because the board may change. So E would simply say nothing.
What does E say now? Sorry.
E is, there is no E.
Okay.
Well, there is, but it's being replaced. But the new E would say, "Nothing herein shall be construed to prevent a future, to prevent future amendments of the American County Code by the means provided for by state law." So there could never be an argument that C and D would actually prohibit, you know, future action, just to clarify that. So for the board's consideration and the Rules Committee's consideration. I think it still falls within the ambit of the advertisement that we did play so far. Of course, we've done a re-advertise, so if it occurs to Mr. Curry and I that there needs to be a slight amendment to the advertisement to cover that eventuality, we would need the board's consensus to do so.
Is that 30-4?
30-4. The new amendments go through A, B, C, and D.
Right.
And then I'm saying that we probably ought to consider taking a look at, like, the proposed language for section E.
Inasmuch as we don't have that language on every other ordinance chapter adopted of.
Well, the reason.
There's nothing we can do in our local ordinance that would trump the state code.
No, that's true, but I'm just saying that way C and D, we, members that have voted have to participate.
Got it.
And so there needs to be a future amendment, like we're admitting this now 20 years later.
Got it.
Just to make sure it was not the intention.
Reconsidering the original motion. Original motion being to pass a resolution or ordinance change.
Yeah, and there's been a complete total changeover of the composition of the board. But anyways, just to consider, and I don't think we need to re-advertise that or change the way the advertisement reads to cover that, but I wanted the Rules Committee to be aware that I would submit that for their consideration.
Yeah, I think we need to meet, then. If you could give us a kind of a window of what works for you, I think. My schedule's flexible, and I'd like to work with you.
Yeah, I'll make myself available.
Okay.
I'll go in and meet.
Thank you very much.
Proposals for reestablishment, time of committee?
Again, Mr. Chairman, I think this is one of those things where we're looking at, it's better to have it on here than not have it, and I was waiting for the board to get some things shut off, stable like the budget and some of these other items, and then maybe we could meet over the summer and discuss putting it back together. But maybe have it get about a second or something. Probably time to stable something this amount of paperwork.
All right. I guess we're down to new business.
Yes, sir.
Insurance provider.
Each year, the county has an opportunity to select an insurance provider. We've used VML for several years. Their last year, we went to Bay Corp. There's a lot of considerations to whether Bay Corp should be selected and used. This year, Bay Corp approached the county again, and Mr. Goff and I met with a representative who provided us a quote for their services, and VML, of course, provided a quote as well. Ms. Maye and the county administrator's office worked hard to clean up our records for vehicles we own, the buildings we own, the workers' comp information, workers' comp classification codes, our line of duty act list to get them in line with reality. That work was very much needed. Both Bay Corp and VML were provided with the updated information, same information, and just earlier today, I received the updated quote from VML responsive to that information. The coverage between VML and Bay Corp is pretty similar. There are a few changes either way, pretty minor. They both conclude the additional coverage for the non-monetary suits, and that's been of considerable interest to the board over the last year, and was very important during this Wolman-Lozinski discussion, which Mr. Goff, we had to go back to VML and point out to them what they agreed to do. The end of the conversation really is, the Bay Corp quote for us is 71,829. The VML quote is 64,816. The board can choose either. To golf, they have some recommendations. You know, I don't, I'm not sure our experience would be a whole lot different with one than the other, the schools use Bay Corp. We budgeted just about $74,000, so you have money budgeted to cover either of them because 74 is what we paid in '18. Lawrence work is what caused it to go down. I provided in the packet two different resolutions. One authorizing the chair to execute the VML documents, and another that was provided by Bay Corp to basically do the same, but for Bay Corp. But we must select one together.
And do you have a strong recommendation either way?
Interestingly, in Gloucester, they split coverage, and VML for some and Bay Corp for other. And you can do that. I don't know if that's worth it. We have quotes for each individual line item, so you could try to, instead of cherry picking workers' comp from this group and automobile from the other. I think the size we are, there's not a considerable cost difference between the two, so I think it probably makes sense to have all of your insurance with one carrier. So that would be my recommendation, whether you changed to Bay Corp or not. It would be some work upfront to get used to the new way of doing things. I understand from last year, the sheriff who uses insurance is probably more than anybody else because automobile, they just had a deer car incident. They're very comfortable with VML, and there'd be a learning curve to switch, but I don't think anything is overwhelming. The biggest difference is the price at this point.
So, Mr. Curry, before I ask a question, do I need to state per quo that I have a personal interest in discussing or voting on this matter since, for Mr. Goff, do I need to?
Because the insurance is covering your.
I'm asking.
Both policies cover the same type of non-monetary cases, so it would apply to every board member.
Well, I'm asking because I'm being covered by VML right now, one of my cases. I just want to state that, just so I'm transparent on that, in case somebody misconstrues me pushing for one over the other or whatnot, but just for safety sake, let the record show that I've got a personal interest in discussing or voting this matter, on this matter.
With that said, I guess you would claim that you can make a decision in the best interest of the public?
Yes. I can have an objective, I mean, in the interest of the public on this matter. So, Mr. Goff, I guess my question is, we have three cases right now that are, I guess, being covered by VML. Am I able to? Well, let's see, there's the two BRAG cases and the case, well, the first BRAG case is being covered by the county.
Okay.
The second BRAG case is covered by VML, and Mr. Mitchell represents the board, the board handles it all. Then there's your case that's being covered by VML.
Right.
I'm not aware of anything else that's being covered by VML.
Okay. Well, I just spoke, I forgot about this. So it gets a little bit confusing if a case were brought pursuant to actions of the board or an accident or whatever that occurred in FY 18.
Right.
Then VML would cover it, even if it's next year and you switched.
Well, that was the nature of my question, is that it's changing horses, it's extreme in the best interest of the board, considering we have two cases, you know.
I don't know what would happen if you had a claim that something occurred in '18 and '19, and I don't know if the insurance companies fight out who isn't going to cover it. I really don't know about that.
Well, that's what they call it, the claims made provision. So, you know, if the claim's made after the effective date, then it's retroactive to, even though the conduct complained of making them before. Sometimes insurance companies fight that out. So that is a disadvantage to a switchover in that there may be eventually some kind of coverage lapse, and I've got to do battle with them again to try to get them to, you know. So I can say that as far as the public officer's liability section that Bay Corp has offered, I was impressed with their responsiveness to that. Also, one of the things that I was interested in was this cyber liability stuff, and Bay Corp, I think, was offering a larger pool, because I believe the way that works is that the pool is limited to a certain amount. You can buy more than. the pool is limited to a certain amount, and you can buy more than the average pool, which in the event that data were stolen from us, or we were having to pay, like a hacker, to get our data back, we could buy a higher level of coverage for rule or nothing under Bay Corp. So, those were my observations about it. I was really impressed with their public officer's liability section and also with their cyber coverage as well. Way that that works is the members of the pool, they have a certain level, and if it's reached, let's say, let's say Alaral County was the first, and they paid out first, and there's nothing left, and we don't have anything. So what they offered was the ability to buy above what the pool had, which I thought was a nice option. And, yeah, the duty to defend stuff, overall, public officers and employees, I was very impressed with Bay Corp. But that's, like I said, they both stack up side by side pretty well.
They're pretty similar, I think. The arguments probably could be made for different countries for one versus the other, and truly no way to know whether any one of those pros and cons will fall in our favor in the next year, because we just don't know what's going to happen.
That's right.
I thought we did need to select one of the other.
It's a little bit cheaper to stay with VML, so I'd say we stick with VML. For different form of motion, if you need to vote.
This is a prepared resolution, I just have to make it clear. It's pretty short, it just basically states that VML's your current provider, and you wish them to be your future provider. Agree if you'd like. Whereas VML's provided Rapid Hand County over the insurance services for many years, whereas insurance coverage currently offered by VML is used by Rapid Hand County Service and needs local citizens at a reasonable cost. Whereas VML has presented the board a request for documentation, which we know will be accomplished, and therefore be resolved and forced supervisor authorized as the chairman of the board the supervisors to execute necessary documents to formally renew all current insurance coverage currently in place to fiscal year 2018, such that they are placed through fiscal year 2018.
Yet again. I'll put that in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. This is also a roll call load. Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Muzinski?
Aye.
Mr. Pedersen?
Aye.
And I myself. Request for board support.
I just want to reiterate my thanks for the work that Lauren did that saved at least $10,000 on insurance. Actually, our first quote from VML was considerably more, so it was probably closer to $20,000. Thank you. The next item is the request for letter of support from the recreational authority. And Swef said that Mr. Van Haker would be here, he is. There is a letter that is in the packet that the park is requesting the board's support, and the letter is to be signed by the chair. It was prepared by Mr. Van Haker for consideration of the board, and perhaps Mr. Van Haker could give the highlights of the dark sky park initiative for the board and the public.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the board, member of the public. I consider myself a proud resident of the new Rapid Hand County, and I came from an area which is very much like Rapid Hand County, with pristine night skies, rolling countryside, and the like. And one of the things that I wanted to do as a concerned citizen of the county was to make these nice dark pristine skies available to the public to enjoy in one fashion or another. And in order to do that, we need to either choose, we need to both choose a location, in my opinion, and we need to choose a certifying authority which would designate that particular property as an area which is suitably dark for enjoyment of the night skies. If you add those two, then you have credibility and good standing in various organizations such as astronomy clubs and the like who would come to enjoy the community we have out here. So, to pursue the certifying organization, I found an organization called the International Dark Skies Association. They certify parks and communities and other types of properties as dark sky locations where public can come and enjoy the night skies. And they have essentially three eligibility criteria. One is it could be, it's a piece of land, it could be private, or it could be public. The sky has to be dark enough to enjoy, and it has to be open to the public for nighttime access to be able to enjoy the celestial wonders that we have. So this idea of selecting the park was conceived by the Rapid Hand League for Environmental Protection, of which I'm a board member, and we presented it to the park authority in December of last year because we felt that the park across from Little Washington had ample facilities for open evening and was a public space, and the skies were exceptionally dark and met all the criteria. Now, the application to get this dark sky park designation has to be submitted by the RCRFA and not anyone else, has to be submitted on its own behalf. I became a board member of the RCRFA as well, so now I'm pushing that application forward. And one of the things the application needs are letters of support from various stakeholders and interested parties in the county and surrounding regions. We think as a park authority that getting a designation has a number of benefits first and reasons. First of all, it recognizes that the county has a pristine night sky that can be enjoyed, and are places in the county to do that. We also think that we want to have opportunity to promote enjoyment of these stars and moon and skies by the public, astronomy clubs, the local Rapid Hand school systems, which we're already working with. And longer terms, we want to engage more in the local economy by supporting active tourism than breakfasts and shops and restaurants by the visitors that will come to the county for this low-impact activity. So, we'd like to get these letters of support so we can gain that recognition, and we think it's also consistent with the original park use intent that Mr. holds when he designated the property as a county park. He would be proud to have that. So, we're submitting the application. The park should qualify as it is, not requiring any money to go forward. The application's free of charge, there's no downshift commitments to the park financially. There are a number of parks in the area, like Sky Notice Park up in Paris, Virginia area. They're also applying for a dark sky park designation. The Stan River Park, another part of Virginia, already got their designation. So this would be just a well-situated park with a designation where we have people that can come and enjoy the skies. We already held one dark sky event back in April, it was advertised in the paper. We had about 50 people. We had members from the Northern Virginia Astronomy Club and other organizations come. We had a refined evening. It was a very low-impact and entertaining activity for the children, it was a family affair, and we got kudos from the organizations that participated. We're pursuing the letters of support from various organizations. We already have it from Northern Virginia Astronomy Club, RLEP, the park authority, businesses at Rapid Hand, and pursuing it with other organizations such as Northern Piedmont, International Dark Sky Association, school administration, Piedmont Environmental Council. So we have a lot of people on tour already. We just are requesting that the board make the motion to have this letter signed so we can include it in the application. I'm available for any questions.
Are you going for bronze, silver, or gold?
Well, I wish we'd go for gold, but we have Front Royal on the horizon over Chester Gap, and I would give a silver, and that's already quite nice. There are very few places here on East Coast that can make silver.
So, and I'm looking through the guidelines here, and it's a lot of criteria here down down, shielded lighting, and you mentioned there'd be no cost. I have to admit, I think I've been at the park after dark. Are there good lighting out there now?
Yes, there are total eight lights, there are 600 pavilions, one behind the maintenance room, where the pump house is included, and one up in the heaves above the restrooms looking down into the picnic area of the pavilion.
So, does it need to be swapped out there?
My opinion, we don't need to, because the overhanging roof is so overhanging that it qualifies as downshuted lighting on its own merits, and that's the case we're going to make.
Or applying for the designation, either having for it or applying for it, will that be clue from having installation of any safety lighting over there? Should any of that light-
Should not. Number of national and state parks have had that same issue come up, and it just means that the type of lighting you would install for safety lighting would be downshift in the appropriate color.
And then, we're going to continue to, I believe they closed the park at dark.
That's right.
Are we going to continue to do that and disurbanize it for special events, or?
The way we're trying to work it, Christine, is that we will be, people who want to use the park as a group or individuals would have to call the park authority or sheriff's office at least a certain period of time and event, working on that timeframe, probably 24 or 72 hours. And they would be given the permission to hold their event. Of course, they would have to clean up after themselves, and that's the park authority's responsibility.
Well, and the authority did ask whether there are any concerns with our insurance coverage at night versus day, and we ran that to ground and determined that there are no issues. The coverage continues to deny.
So, VML or Bay Corp?
VML. Did I? I'll go ahead and make a motion that authorize the chairman to sign this letter to be to the International Dark Skies Association. It's a great step in the right direction to promote tourism and property. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second? All of the favors? Stay on.
Aye.
All of those? Very good. Mr. Chairman.
Much as done. Been busy in the county administration. I also mentioned that I've been working with Mr. Jenkins, and Mr. Crasys actually helped some with the generator issue at Amistil. Had some issues during the long power outage, and looking to replace that. But before we do that, we spread our view to look at all the wiring in the area, and so it looks like it's going to turn into a little bit bigger project, so it'll slow down to make sure that we're investing our funds wisely and making the right changes, not just the quick or expedient change. That may lead to some issues, because that generator powers the well. The well provides water for the waste management issues, but also the oil. So it may take human intervention to get that running if we have a prolonged power outage. It takes us some time to get that done. Beyond that, report to the public and the board that I was out of town this past weekend, and I no longer have any children in high school, my daughter graduated high school. Very excited, and all my attention will be here in Rapid Hand. Well, I've been diverted in fact, so I don't have anything else for figuring out.
Never would college start.
But after, since you have two college tuitions. I just may have to work more. Nothing else I've seen, if you can say anything.
All right, we have building reports and BDOT report.
Standard building reports in your packets. Something that occurred to me is that perhaps the board would like to start receiving a report from your zoning administrator on general activities that are happening out of that office, similar to what's being done for the building report, and I'm going to ask her to start doing that so that can be reported in your package.
Good idea.
That would be very helpful.
And then, BDOT report again, standard report in the same package. I will report, and did under county administrative activities. I have engaged BDOT regarding the large pile at Amistil site and have gained their, they have agreed to help manage that pile, although only a small part of that pile. So, there will be considerable cost for us, and that's something I'll be working on going forward. BDOT contractor will be on site, and they will pay for that contractor for a day. So it's my goal to put an IOP out on the street, make sure their contractor knows that it's on the street, and hopefully they'll buy into that, knowing that their mobilization cost is already covered. And if they're all bearaded or not, for now. As we know, we received $20,000 from the AFRID grant this year, so that will help cover the cost of managing material. As I understand, it's largely driven to that location because of potential use for pellets through the AFRID grant that basically showed that it wasn't a good plan to afford. So, we'll be working on that over the next month or so, trying to get that resolved. BDOT will have their contractor in the area sometime over the next month or two for the big pile they have there. Do you know who they use? I have a copy of the contract, but I can't remember. They have a big tuck grinder, and I guess, you know, they do like 4,000 cubic yards a day. Is it Partlow? Hallper? Doesn't sound familiar. There's a family, I don't even know if they still run it, Mr. Wellesley, the Beatty family from Flat Hill?
Yeah, the Beatties.
They have quite an operation, I don't know if they'd be interested. So if you put it out on the street, they'd make a profit. Yeah, and this is something also we can put out in EVA and see if we can get some attention. It's a pretty big pile, so you'd think there'd be some interest for people to be able to afford a little bit of mobilization to take care of that. Those folks have the equipment. Those tuck dravers were pretty amazing.
Just one more on BDOT, is there any more update on the Long Lane Bridge on Water Street? When you set up the traffic?
Oh, yeah, I sent, at the last board meeting, the board had the public hearing, passed the resolution requesting the CTB to designate that street as through truck restriction. I did pass the resolution on to Mr. Nesbitt under the cover of letter, asking him to pass the resolution on to the CTB. He thought that that would probably not be till July or August. So we'll keep an eye on the CTB agenda as well as Mr. Nesbitt to see that follow-through. Can't imagine the CTB will not agree, given that the alternate route is shorter than the primary route.
I guess the next item would be infrastructure for public safety facilities. We're not going to do this litigation.
Yeah.
This thing, we might be able to get things.
Correct, that is the next item. And you have a motion prepared that will have to strike portion of the motions that relate to the litigation that you've decided not to go towards moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Rapid Hand County Board Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with Chapter 2.2-3711 Alpha of Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly- of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body and discussion or consideration of an investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved where, if made public initially, the financial interest of a governmental unit would adversely affect it. 2.2 dash 3711 Alpha 3 and Alpha 6. Subject matter of the closed meeting will be tower infrastructure cited for public safety systems.
I'll second.
Motion with the subject, all of them stated?
All of them.
You have the roll call vote, Mr. Crayton, Mr. Posensky?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Certified closed meeting. So did each of you certify that to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters will offer the exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act? And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the board supervisors in the closing meeting?
Roll call vote, Mr. Crayton?
Aye.
Y'all?
Aye.
Aye.
I, Parrish?
Aye.
We spoke at F1.
Yeah, from the calling session, open the afternoon session, move item F1 now to public hearing. That's agree to get?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jim DeGraff?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Good afternoon, good evening. I guess I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jim McRae. I recently come on board as the new executive director for the Community Services Board. In addition to being the Community Service Board, I do like to remind people too, we are also the area officer and the agent. Sometimes I think that it's lost a little bit. We do run the senior center and scrabble school as well. And I just wanted to thank you for allowing me just to say hello and kind of reconfirming our organization's commitment to Rabbit Henne County. And if there's anything from a service perspective that we can do for you as an organization, that's what we are going to do. And I hear it's a great place for people from Liverpool High School. My old high school, State New York, in the city.
I was joking that everyone around here is related to each other. Well, case in point.
Very small.
So one of the things that I've heard at some regional meetings is an interest for Rabbit Henne County to be receiving services more directly in our localities. And so I guess over the next year or so, our board members and Mr. DeGraff will be looking to you to find ways to bring those services here.
I am so happy to hear you say that because that is, you know, one of the things we've discussed and it's actually being discussed on the state and national levels. But I think Jim can address that.
Yeah, I think absolutely. When I came here and when I was offered the position, I think, you know, the idea of the connection to your local community was one of the major objectives, organizations' role. And our organization mission and vision talks about community service to the five counties we represent. And for me, that means we are equally representing all the counties that we support. And you, I don't think you necessarily do that from one central test location.
So Jim, I was looking to get these news bulletins from Virginia Association of Counties and they sent one out on the recent budget deal. And I know you probably haven't had a chance, nobody really knows what the impact of that is. But I saw things in there like more funding for mental health screenings, primary care screenings, outpatient mental health, substance abuse, detox services. Is Community Services Board getting those arenas at all?
We do, yes. It's, it's very interesting what actually is happening. I think people are aware of the expansion of Medicaid. That opens up, and I have the numbers, I just don't want to guess at the number of additional people that will become Medicaid eligible in your county. The number of 190's to give, my head, but please don't forget that. The, with the expansion of Medicaid, there is additional funding for services. How that is going to be coming about, we still don't know. What we do know is that the cost of the Commonwealth for the expansion of Medicaid services is about $200 million. It's expected that it will bring $2 billion of services into the county with the federal management funds. Now, for us as an organization though, unfortunately, it means that we have to, the Community Service Board are actually receiving a funding deduction with the expansion of Medicaid. Exactly how much of this we do not know yet. For the state, it's about $11 million that our budgets are being cut. It is believed though that with the expansion of services Medicaid eligibility, that more people will be reached and that money will be improved through the addition of more services.
Exactly how long is that federal money supposed to roll in? I mean, it's only for a certain amount of time and they're broke. I mean, actually they're worse than broke to start with, so.
Well, I think the, the, through the Affordable Care Act, to encourage states to expand Medicaid services, the federal government normally, when you receive funding for Medicaid, it's, for most it's about 50, 50, 50% of local dollars to 50% of federal dollars. With the expansion of Medicaid, kind of the incentive to states to expand their Medicaid roles is the federal Medicaid match goes up to 90% and the state match is 10%. I honestly, I don't know how long. I know it is perceived in the future that that will roll back. What the exact roll back figures are, I don't know. But I know it is, at least for the next few years, it's expected that, I'm not a state that would be 100% federal.
Do you have much experience with trust with the federal government?
I think that's for George.
I, well, I would say I've been overseeing Medicaid funded services and services for people with intellectual behavioral difficulties for a long time. And I think there are certain advantages to the system and there are obviously certain struggles for the system as well.
I'm just trying to ask you some questions from the industry, though obviously the political side of this is beyond us.
Well, you know, I, I, I do think with the, from the Community Service Board point of view, Medicaid expansion is a positive benefit if we can get services to people who are not insured, not receiving services in another manner. You know, I think everyone is overly aware of the struggle with opioids, behavioral health difficulties. So if people get services, and, and I think from my perspective, if we get people off of service roles and get them stable in their lives so that they can be working, that's an advantage to all of us. And it's really, I think, what our organization will hold.
C S B doesn't have any role with the schools, right? Mental health providers within the school system?
Um, we do some really, our, it depends on the C S B. I think there are some Community Service Boards that do provide in-school support. Our organization really does not do. We, we work in partnership with the schools, but not necessarily in the schools as a service provider.
So when you say you work in partnership, when you?
Well, if, if we do some early intervention programs, we have case management for, for children, we can do some substance abuse services for kids will be in the school district. So if the school districts were identifying kids with behavioral health difficulties or substance abuse difficulties, they could be seen in our, our COVID-19 services.
I will mention that because one of the comments from, comment we get from some people within the school system is they don't have a full-time mental health provider, counselor. Continues, I think, to be a, an ongoing issue. And I did not know whether, it's just, you know, a school budget issue or if there's other services surrounding school and then the county or regionally that get into that.
I think, I think there could be, depending, I think we have similar struggles as the school district. One of our biggest struggles is being able to recruit and retain high-quality veterans. So that's a real struggle.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you again, I appreciate it.
I'd like to address, it's Gary.
Yes.
I wanted to address what you said earlier about, you know.
Yeah, can you come up here? You want to introduce yourself?
Just his. I just, I, I wanted to address a bit what you were talking about and asking about.
And you're one of our members on the Community Services Board.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm one of the representatives from Rabbit Henne County on the C S B. And so Gary, you mentioned earlier and kind of pointed to me, rightly so, about, you know, how the C S B can be more visible in the community. And as many people know, 20 years ago, we had a clinic in the county, people had mental health services available here, not full-time, that could see a psychiatrist. And we don't have that now. And there has been discussion of that. We don't know how that's going to look budget-wise. But as a member of Rabbit Henne County, representing Rabbit Henne, part of my being on the Board of Directors, which is the case with any county, is that I want to advocate for Rabbit Henne and citizens of Rabbit Henne. So I'm very open to meeting with board members, answering questions, I mean, certainly not tonight. But if you want to draft up, you know, questions about any information you need, like, do we really know what the C S B does? It does a lot, but a lot of people don't know all those details. Any, any questions you have, I'd be happy to entertain those either by coming back or giving you written information or whatever. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we got two items tonight for a public hearing. The first one, a citizen requested code amendments 170-36C with code of law, driving, driving, and jail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Miller has a vote for a text amendment to Rabbit Henne County zoning ordinance specifically under section 170 dash 36, which is permitted uses table with code, but also addresses items that require special permit or special exception. Mr. Miller had wishes to move the term driving ranges from go-parks and other similar outdoor activities to country club and golf courses. Country club and golf courses within the zoning table and agricultural and the R District, R B I District require special exception. If this amendment were approved, Mr. Miller would still need to come back through the planning commission and the board supervisors to obtain a special exception permit. The planning commission held open hearing and recommended approval of this amendment. And I'll note that Mr. Miller, the applicant, is present tonight. Thank you.
Okay, before we open the hearing, I would just let you know that anyone wishing or caring to speak will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please state your name, the district that you're in, record your comments to the board, and restrict your comments to the top. I declare the public hearing over. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, Tom.
I'm Tom John from Piedmont District in Sperryville. Went to the planning commission meeting. Everyone that I heard said this is spot zoning. I spent 12 years on planning commission, he is chairman, certified planner. The chairman of the planning commission got up in the end and says, this is not spot zoning, this is spot zoning. If the planning commission had done their job over the years, this could have been addressed. Mr. Miller might not even have to come here tonight for this sort of thing. That's why you have to address the zoning. You need to go out and you can't do it by putting it online. You need to go out to the, and I've been preaching this, and I don't think I'm going to get through, but I'm going to try. You need to go out to each of the districts, find out what they want. This is a big change in zoning, believe it or not. It's, I believe it's rule residential, whatever it is. Now you're going to allow golf courses around Amosville, Woodville, wherever you want. This is, this is what, when you change and you do spot zoning. If you have public consensus, it's not a big deal. Even the sign controversy in Sperryville could have been taken care of by zoning, where you can still keep the integrity of the signs, but you could still allow a nice sign like that, a billboard type thing for each one of the towns. This is all a problem of not doing the job to the zoning people. Now you have enough people. When John McCarthy, we did it years ago, it was, wasn't that, it was 2003 or 2004 when it was going on. The comprehensive plan, everything needs to be gone over again. Again, he wouldn't even have to come here if that was the case. So you're promoting tourism. So you put it in the areas, highway commercial, whatever it is, needs to be written in. Each time you spot zone, you're degrading the county and the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to address a topic that came up in this afternoon's meeting. Before I come up, I wanted to get your permission to talk about something that was discussed this afternoon.
There will be a public comment after the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm Patty Hardy from Hampton District. And before I say anything, I just want to make sure that it's clear that I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the newspaper. I don't know what the position is for the publisher and the editor. But I feel that making this amendment would be, I, I oppose making this amendment. I think it sets a real precedent for other businesses or individuals, whatever, who want to come in and, and put commercial operations into agricultural or rural residential districts. I think as soon as you do this, you really open the door for, for other activity. If this were something that was beneficial, had a clear benefit for the entire county, for the entire community, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's something to consider. But from where I sit, this looks like it's benefiting a family. And I have nothing against that, that family. I'm nothing, I, it's just that this seems like not the way to go with this kind of amendment. Thank you.
So can I speak here? Is it okay if I speak from here?
If they can hear you.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak loudly. My name's Terry Dixon with Stonewall Hawthorne District. And I think I concur with the previous two speakers. I am against changing the text of the zoning to, to put zoning in one little area. So I did a little research, I saw it was called spot zoning. So I looked up spot zoning on the internet. I found a definition, "Spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel, parcel of land within a larger zoned area where the rezoning is usually at odds with the county's master plan and current zoning restrictions." On another Google search, I Googled preventing spot zoning. How to prevent spot zoning? This is just straight off the internet. "Good planning practices will prevent appearances of spot zoning. In fact, adherence to the standards and an up-to-date comprehensive plan describing the intended use of the land and which is in the best interest of the community virtually eliminates this problem." So there you go, comprehensive plan update. When was the last time the comprehensive plan was updated? 10-plus years. I think Mr. Johnk at a previous meeting had said, years ago, they took the, they took the show, the show on the road and went to the different managerial districts in the county to get public input of what should happen to the comprehensive plan. I think that's a fabulous idea. I would, gentlemen and lady, I would direct the planning commission to do- I would, gentlemen and lady, I would direct the Planning Commission to do that. Let's get some citizen input. Let's update that plan so we don't have appearances of spot zoning. And I think this is spot zoning, but let's get rid of that. Update the comprehensive plan. I suggest you table this text amendment and send it back and let, find a different way. In saying all that, I am not against a driving range or golf course or whatever. I'm not against, I think it's great that a local person invests money in the community to generate income and people in it. I think that's good. Let's do it the right way. Let's not make a spot zoning, set a precedent. So what if a guy comes in and says, "Well, I got a two-acre parcel over here on the other side of Sperryville. I want to build two houses on it." You know, I mean, you know, why not, right? It's just a little change. It's going to benefit the community, more people leaving restaurants. It opens you all up. It opens us all up. So I suggest table that. Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak?
Yes.
Yoko Borski, Hampton District. I understand the zoning ordinance has been in a review process for years, these couple of years now. And the final recommended draft has not come up yet. And why this particular one amendment is pushed through and is not part of the logic issue of the amendment package is a big question for me. I would like the board to direct the Planning Commission to come up with a final recommendation of the zoning ordinance amendments, including this one, and then present it to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Doc Nash, I'm Yoko Sessman. And I'm with Mr. Wissinski's lawyer. I moved out here four years ago and bought my best friend's house, who built it in 1999. And I never thought that my dreams would come true and I would get to have his home. And we live on Little Jenkins Fountain above the Co-op. And we have, Jesus, the most idyllic view you've ever seen in your life. But if I were a golf course resort entrepreneur, boy, would I like to have Blue Rock. Boy, would I like to have Palmer. Boy, would I like to have some of the huge projects that are involved in this county that haven't been completed. We've got one out-of-county resident with three huge properties, multimillion-dollar properties, that are under construction for two years. We don't even know what they're going to do. They have residential building permits, but they could turn those things into hospices, healthcare homes, every darn thing. And I thought, you know, my supervisor, Mr. Wissinski, has got amendments out there that will, like, allow an amendment to the zoning code that would almost make annulity of so many other important amendments. I took the time to read our comprehensive plan before I moved out here. Because I'm not anal compulsive or anything, but I really wanted to know where I was coming to live. And I read that, I read that comprehensive plan, and it was beautiful. It said, "First, letting everybody know we're a scenic county. That's what we are. And that's what we will stay." I don't, you know, whether it's real estate people on the board or whatever, as long as you're sharing that view, I'm cool with that. But if there are people on the board that say the comprehensive plan doesn't make much difference to what they want to do because of popularity and not what the law says, then I've got a real problem with that. And, you know, everybody out here has got, you know, one degree of separation. You hit one person, you hit like half the people in the county. And under Miller's, we have a great family in this county, and I don't want to pose in for anything. But when we start having golf courses and possibly country clubs and things like that, I think we've got to go back to the hearing level and make sure that the people that are proposing such an amendment give the basis for that. And I would love to have anyone go, and I'm a supporter of David Connick, go through some of Connick's memos to you today. And anybody who disagrees with that, to make a cogent argument against Connick's memo. Because there are many things about Connick that we don't get along. But he's a great lawyer. And if you want to go the other way on this, I would like to hear someone refute his memo. It's a good memo, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for your time.
Yes, Gary.
I'm Carolyn Brown Butler. I live in Piedmont District. I have, now, my family has lived and died and struggled here since 1722. So I feel I have a lot invested in this, as you do, Roger. And if this happens, you're killing what you and I know, Roger. We're from the same place. And you're killing Rabbit Hennessy because it's not just Mr. Miller. I don't really know Mr. Miller. I knew his grandfather, he was a great man, a good man. But I just, we cannot have spot zoning. And there's already so many permits that have been issued for things in Sperryville. And if you all would just take a close look at it, it's a lot going on in a very short place. And it's a double drive on the Beltway than to pull out Woodbridge Road on the magistrate. So, please, let's get control of this to keep it what we all love and want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Yeah.
Page twenty, Jackson District. The comp plan clearly states that to convert agricultural zoning property to commercial, quote, "only when absolutely necessary." So my question is, what does that mean? I'm pretty sure it doesn't mean something that benefits Cliff Miller or gives him a good tax write-off. The reason I consider a golf driving range commercial, not agriculture, not anything else, is because if you look at the economics, you have to do something as big as the one in Ashburn with that much traffic to make money. So if you're not doing that, that's a close problem. If he's not going to make money, you can get a tax write-off. I don't care. All right? And you're right, Chris, comp plan is not the law. All right? But it is what the law, the zoning ordinance, is based on. And my understanding, what the Planning Commission is supposed to do is take that comp plan when they need to interpret what the zoning ordinance is trying to say. All right? So when you earlier today kind of dismissed it as not that important, it seems like you're kind of being disrespectful to the constituents. Second point from your earlier comment today is the Planning Commission works for you. You're not the board of, "I approve whatever is given to me." You're the Board of Supervisors. If the Planning Commission isn't getting its work done, it's your job, members of the Board of Supervisors, to kick them in the butt. If you told one of your employees to deliver A to someone and it didn't happen, what are you going to tell the customer? "I'm sorry, it was their fault." I doubt you'd do that. But you're also one of the Planning Commission. So I don't understand how your comment was earlier today. The point is, a driving range is a commercial activity. It is not like a golf course. It is not like, it is a commercial activity if it's going to make money. All right? But, fine. And I agree with Mr. Junk and a bunch of other people, it is spot zoning. When you do a zoning change solely for the interest of the landowner, that is the definition of spot zoning, that I understand. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak?
Yes. I'd just like to resume one of the things.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not asking for the land to be rezoned. I'm simply asking for a practice area to be put in a reasonable place. The land is agricultural land, most of it will remain agricultural land. We're looking to take ten or less acres and have a place for people to hit and off on before they play. And to address that, this is, you know, to say that this is solely for me is absurd. Go out there and talk to the dozens of golfers who enjoy outdoor recreation on a course right now. We've done something to do with very little water. I think that it would be very easy to argue that it's been hugely beneficial to the community and employs people as well. What I'm asking for is to simply place a driving range or a practice area in a category that makes sense from a zoning perspective. And a driving range takes 10 acres. And now it's in, you know, it's, you're only allowed to apply for a permit in a commercial area. There's not a commercial area in the whole county that's big enough to apply for it. So you might as well not even have it in the code. The code is written in a way that doesn't make sense. Now, I'll have to come back here and apply for an actual practice area, and I'll do that. And I'll hopefully give you something that makes sense to everyone. I'm not going to put up nets or lights or anything. I want to mow a patch of grass where people can go out and practice. They don't make noise, it won't be open at night. I don't think it's any kind of blight on the landscape. I'm simply asking for this to be placed in a place that makes sense. And I agree with Mr. Junk. I think when this was written, it was written poorly. And all I'm asking for is the opportunity to bring you something. And I'm going to bring you everything you asked for, as I've done before. So, you know, I think all I'm asking for is something that makes immense sense from a zoning perspective. And I'm assuming that the reason that I write a $500 check to come in front of you and speak about this is that I get the opportunity to at least argue that the zoning laws were written in a way that doesn't make sense, and I'd like to have them remitted. And again, we're not here to decide if Cliff Miller is to build a driving range. We're here to decide if the zoning law makes sense. And I would argue that. Thank you.
Yes.
Nevada Estes, Hampton District. You know, I can see why he wants this driving range, and I can see, Erwin, but isn't there another way to do this? Like, say, "Let me apply for a zoning change on my property." I mean, I don't know the laws, and I briefly looked at the comprehensive plan, but I'm not, I don't remember. But my feeling is that you can apply, it's in an area that already has commercial usage. You could apply for a zoning change. This subject would not be a problem. You wouldn't have all this fighting back and forth. But go through, apply for a zoning change on that property. Don't make a change that causes problems in the entire county later on by saying, "Okay, we're going to do this." And then everywhere in rural or agricultural area, you're going to have this problem in the future. I mean, it's gone. There's no rule to hinder anybody. So if he wants his driving range, terrific. Apply for another, a different zoning in that area. I don't understand what the problem is. Everybody else seems to think it's great. Apply for a zoning change. That's it.
Excuse me. I wasn't fast enough to catch your name.
Nevada Estes.
Estes, that's right. Sorry.
That's okay. It's a good name.
It is. Anyone else? Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else? I think the public hearing closed. You got any comments from the board members?
I do. But I don't have to hear first.
Right.
I just, I too have to take a few, um... I'm sorry. I can't induce this. I guess I have to take a few issues with something that Mr. Harris said earlier. The comprehensive plan is the overall designs, the framework, it's the thing that is supposed to be the living, breathing document that everybody has input in, that it's how we want to see the county and how we want to go forward. So zoning cases in court have been lost because government bodies have made decisions, and they didn't cite where the zoning decision they made did not line up with the comprehensive plan. So they actually do have some legal responsibility in the whole process. And those that want the Planning Commission to go to the districts, we did that. Unfortunately, it was about three, four years ago, and I may be the only one that remembers that.
It was about six years ago.
Maybe it could have been. See, I remember this not that clearly. So we did it, but if it was a long time ago, we'd probably have to have it again. Yeah, the problem is, I have to agree that I think that this is not a good thing because we're talking about a zoning change that will affect R5 and Ag zoning throughout the county. That means you can have one in Golden Mills, you could have one in View Town, you could have one just outside Pliny Hill, the hill there in Huntley. I mean, we could, we're changing the entire zoning ordinance actually because one person asked for it on a piece of property that they may or may not apply to do this later on. I think it's a very bad, bad zoning practice, I believe. You would not see this reprimanded in zoning books, in seminars. We talked to people that actually did pay to make these kinds of decisions. I don't think they would support this. And unfortunately, our design administrator finds herself in a position where, you know, she's, I guess, she took the application because one of our citizens applied for it. I don't see where they actually support it, in the stuff that I was looking at earlier. Now, and maybe that's not her decision to make either. It's our decision, it's a political decision to do it. And I just think it's a very, very bad land use decision. I mean, can you imagine me with one of these things? Think about that. I'm in Ag, zoning. And once you approve this, then I have the ability to apply for it right here on View Town Road with no fourth or planning permission. Fast-tracked this thing for whatever reason I don't know. We're still talking about the May Amendments. The May Amendments, I was working on when I was reverend for this board on the Planning Commission, and all of a sudden, they got cast aside. They've seen, they've not seen the light of day. And here we are, we've changed this, we've changed that, we've changed other things. But we can't seem to work on getting our zoning ordinance aligned with state code. Right now, our zoning ordinance still refers to the Virginia Department of Transportation. I mean, Virginia Department of Highways. We're trying to amend the language to say Virginia Department of Transportation. That's how out of line our zoning ordinance is with state language. Do you know when they changed from Department of Highways to Department of Transportation? Do you know who was governor then? Think about that. Gerald Villiers. He was governor when they made the change from Virginia Department of Highways to the Virginia Department of Transportation. And the reason they did that was they included all means of surface and air transportation in the Commonwealth into this one big, overreaching body. Maybe we shouldn't, but that's what it happened. So for 30 years, our zoning ordinance has been out of alignment with proper phraseology in the code of Virginia. But we haven't changed it. But we keep fast-tracking this. So this is a piecemeal approach to amending our zoning ordinance. That's another reason why we shouldn't be doing it. This, if we actually think this is a good thing, why isn't this included in the May Amendments that were dubbed the May Amendments a year ago in May? It's not good planning. I don't really know how this thing got this far.
I can address process. Obviously, the May Amendments, I'm not sure the genesis initially in my tenure here, but that have percolated through the Planning Commission and taken some time probably to determine what the best modification may or may not be based on the Planning Commission's vision. And that takes time because they're struggling to determine what is best. And I understand, it's interview with Michelle and county attorney right now. That's much different than a citizen saying, "I'd like to make this specific change." There is no subjective nature to that when it comes to the Planning Commission or the board. And not shaped by staff or shaped by the Planning Commission. That citizen requests a specific action that's put forward to the Planning Commission for review, and then ultimately to the board. And I would recommend that, you know, I think you're limited in looking at that to vote up and down on what that request is. Well, that doesn't mean that part of the request may not have some valid or validity or... or maybe want to accommodate driving range somewhere other than commercial. I don't know. But you could then ask the planning commission to incorporate this into their considerations if you don't think the specific amendment requested by this citizen achieves what the board wants to see.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I may agree with some of that as far as the process. Maybe we wouldn't want a constituent to be hung up for a year and a half. But if you take the substantive changes out of those so-called May amendments, and you don't look at, we're trying to change the terminology to align with state code because that's, that's really out of our, that's a state process to begin with. It's really not part of our purview. We're just trying to do some housekeeping there. If you take the actual substantive changes of those May amendments, that thing has been languishing for a year and a half, for actually over just, just a couple of substantive changes, and this thing doesn't have 30 minutes of planning commission involvement. So if, I mean, if we're going to try and separate the amount of time that those changes have had applied to them, and this, this thing is like, should have had at least maybe a second or a third meeting, maybe a workshop or something, but it didn't happen. It just gets applied forward, and it gets recommended for approval, and then goes in front of us. There's no, there's been no work done on additional standards. I mean, when you start, when you change your entire zoning ordinance to allow something that can be put in so many different areas in the county, and we didn't even spend 20 minutes of the planning commission on this, that's not good.
And I think that's a very good point. And the planning commission issue aside, it sounds to me like there are many people in the community who do not think of driving range without any limits, lights or size or parking would make sense.
Imagine me with this.
So with that said, if that's prerogative of the board, then you would not want to approve this amendment, and you may consider approving some other amendment that's contemplated by the planning commission staff or others that would include appropriate restrictions so that there aren't any lights, it's only 10 acres, or whatever it is that would make it work.
And you're not going to do Town Road near any certain course rules.
No. You're somewhat limited with that if you're going to allow it in certain zoning districts. It's allowed. You can put reasonable conditions through your ordinance on limiting what type of driving range would be allowed.
Yeah, I just, I just think that it's, it may be too much, too simple. It may, it may be a good idea, but it, I think it would be much simpler and cleaner if we had an applicant that applied. The reason would be stoping and put it there where it's already allowed.
And it's really like the difference, like... There are concerns on all sides with spot zoning, and the rezoning of a parcel that's surrounded by ag or rural residential to a commercial could also very easily be considered spot zoning. This, you know, this is a little bit of further stretch to spot zoning because it does affect the entire county, which makes the gravity of the situation that much more important, and would lead you to want to include significant additions.
And we don't have it.
My personal recommendation, if you wanted it, would be that you not approve this, but you refer the topic to the planning commission to consider along with the May amendments, which Michelle are, are working through and strike through right now. I don't know when it will lead to the planning commission. I thought it's already done. Perhaps at their next meeting, so as a draft, and then they can start building from there. That's, that's my process.
I had developed similar thoughts based on the feedback from the community and particular concerns over light, structure, noise, hours, and traffic that people had brought up. And I think, you know, that it's important to promote business, but at the same time, this is presumably near our village, and villages are our areas that we want to develop for places for people to live. And so we need to make sure it's not something that will be off-putting at the same time with all of those possible distractions. Holly Mead had brought up the idea in the planning commission of coming up with additional standards for this that would leave it in commercial zoning with a certain set of standards, and then possibly allow it in agricultural areas with a more restrictive set of standards. And that would be my preference, would be to send it back down to the planning commission for further review.
And I guess, if I were the board, I would dispatch with this application that's before you for a zoning amendment, up or down, and independently refer to the planning commission to deal with this rather than prolong this particular application for amendment.
Well, I'd like to say that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood this afternoon. The comprehensive plan is the backbone of our county in the county. It is our guiding light. My point was that the new comprehensive plan and the old comprehensive plan are pretty close to being identical. There's very little change that I've seen in it. And I was waiting for the, as I understand it, that the planning commission is waiting for the PDC to come up with some populations of the villages because the demographics have to be updated, and they, very little change in those, but still, they need to be, you know, addressed. And so, and, you know, it's pretty hard. At least when I have somebody that goes on aid delivery, I do control the salary, and it's, it's pretty hard to ask the, you know, to wield the whip over top of the members of the planning commission for their, whatever it is they get a month, $10 or something. I don't know what it is, but...
It's a whole $30, I think.
$30, yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's been a slow process yesterday. And then when they first started working on it, I think it was six years ago, they went to every single district that Mr. John recommended. I went to the one that was in Castleton. There were maybe half a dozen people there. It wasn't a whole lot of turnout for those meetings. It was pretty discouraging for the...
Look, it was the same, almost the same group that met us at Chester Gator.
Right. They, yeah, it was, what I'm saying is there were very few citizens that showed up. And I think the reason is the citizens, by and large, are not too worried about, you know, this in county that it's a very stable county. I think that everybody pretty much agrees that we want to keep it open and agricultural and keep the population down, and just keep it a nice, quiet place for people to enjoy living. And so, I don't know anybody really that doesn't believe it. So anyway, yeah, in terms of this, I guess to bump it along, I think I was there at the planning commission that night. I didn't vote on this. My impression was that we pushed it along in order to have a public hearing, to see what people thought about it. The fact that we assume that Mr. Miller is going to apply for a driving range on a specific area is incidental to this application. This is purely a text, a text change, and it is probably premature because we are going to look at other zoning amendments, and this should just be one of those in where we implement, you know, standards like the lighting, size, et cetera, et cetera. There's lately been a lot of, several applications from land that's in agricultural district, farms, that are asking for ways to supplement their income from agriculture, whether it's a VAS or claims or whatever. And so, I mean, this could be a way for people that own agricultural land to supplement the income if they're not, I mean, I think that, really, when you look, when you look at it, the county is pretty much held together by not that many farmers, and they all go broke and sell out, and I don't know what we could expect. So, I mean, that was a, that was an issue with me tonight. Also, we are pretty much getting overrun with wineries, and they're, they're not subject to the same restrictions as everybody else is in this county, and they can have events and do things that they want to do without coming to the county for permission. So that's, that's an issue to, to deal with. So, let's see, Mr. Wayne taking notes over there so he can take the next opportunity to criticize me, help yourself, and that's about all I got.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. I think Mr. Miller framed the question properly tonight. We were discussing a text amendment. The zoning administrators, Michelle's letter here, the last paragraph, if this amendment were to be approved by the board, Mr. Miller would still need to apply and submit a completed application for a special exception, which would go before the planning commission and this board for a public hearing before it can be approved or denied. So I don't think the issue before us tonight is about spot zoning, yet, yet. And I'm struggling with this. And what I'm struggling with is whether or not this range is, is it commercial? Is it commercial, or is it something different? You know, does it fit in ag? And I think what's been discussed here tonight to ask the planning commission to incorporate it into their work, go on the amendments and look at restrictions and/or standards is probably the right way to go here rather than rushing to judgment on this. So that's where my thoughts are this evening.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we deny this application and that we remand it to the, to the planning commission in order to look at its viability along with other text amendments that we have for our zoning and go forward in that direction.
A second, Ed.
Motion made. Second, any other discussion? I would just like to say that sitting here where I sit, I get to listen to everybody else first, and when my opinion has already been spoken, I don't need to repeat it. So I'm not going to repeat it again tonight. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next public hearing is on Thursday.
Actually, sir, yeah, you're right.
I'll hear your statement.
Yeah, this public hearing unfortunately cannot go forward tonight. There was a mix-up with paper. We sent them the ads for the planning commission vacancy, and this public hearing ad asked for the planning commission vacancy around once, and public hearing ad to run twice, and they did the opposite. So we have plenty of advertisement for the planning commission ad, but not, enough advertisement for this item. So it will be heard for a public hearing at the July 2 meeting, after which it will have been advertised for two successive weeks in the newspaper.
Good, Ed. Thanks for the public comment. If you're in a public comments section, anyone who can speak, they do tell you they can speak on any topic. Direct your comments to the board, state your name.
I might as well go first again. That's okay. I say I might as well go first again.
Public comment is open. You may go first.
Well, I guess enough of that. John Wayne Vincent, let's get to the Rat Kellin. Rat Kellin I'm talking about is, I've read the Bragg suit came back from the Supreme I think it would be foolish to continue on with that suit costing a taxpayer undue amount of money for what? If you win or you lose, whatever, it's still going to cost the taxpayer money. When I first saw this, I said, whoa, Peter Loach retiring? Oh, this is how he's funding his retirement? But anyway, if you continue on with the suit, the three supervisors that are named in the suit and continue on with suit, I would respectfully ask for their resignation because this is only costing the taxpayers money for nothing. You have more important business to do than this. You need to jump on the planning commission to make them do the things that needs to be done for the citizens of Rappahanna County. Thank you very much.
Anything else here?
You can hear me from back here, but I'm not here to talk about zoning.
Name?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Kurt Whitson, Hampton District, 722 Harris Hollow Road. Socially relevant to my comments. I'm not here to talk about zoning or lawsuits or anything exotic, very disappointing. I want to talk about reliable landline phone service. So down to brass tacks, I know that you will be talking tonight about the efforts of Mr. Curry, Mr. Lizinski, Mr. Welch, and others to help those of us in Harris Hollow Road and other parts of Rappahanna County who've been suffering with no landline, phone service. What I want to do is differentiate Harris Hollow from the other areas in the county that might be discussed because at the risk of being self-centered, we've been dealing with CenturyLink and predecessor company, Ember, for probably a decade of sketchy, unreliable phone service, which to me is unbelievable. In my household, we pay $80 a month, that's about $1,000 a year for a landline that we can use. My guess would be over the course of the last 10 years, probably 60% of the time at best, and in the last six months, I would probably say 20% of the time, if that. I talked to Mr. Lizinski the other day, and I really appreciate his focus on this issue. When the power goes out, we all see the yellow trucks show up in force. The power comes back on, and we're all grateful for that. I have a generator, so I'm willing to enjoy my generator for an hour or two or a day or two, but I know that the power is going to come back on. When the phone goes out, I don't see the posse of phone truck, phone company trucks rolling down Harris Hollow Road. What I do see, on one occasion, one guy with a pickup truck with his head in a little phone junction box, and his girlfriend or wife sitting next to him in a lawn chair under an umbrella. That was about three weeks ago. A decade of unreliable phone service, and this is what CenturyLink does to respond to our needs. Tonight I saw yet another guy in a pickup truck with a magnet on the side that says he's a contractor out of Florida or someplace. That's who I saw on our Hollow today. It's an obvious public safety issue. I have a luxury of reliable internet service through Piedmont Broadband. God bless them. As long as that works, I'm okay, but God forbid someone's house starts on fire, or somebody goes into cardiac arrest, and they don't have that luxury. CenturyLink should be helped to task in this regard. And I will say this, I believe that your next step as a county administrator and as members of board of supervisors should be to draw a line in the sand with CenturyLink. And I'm not going to talk about Verizon. That's not my problem. With CenturyLink, Harris Hollow, give them a date, a drop dead date, and upon that date, everyone in the Hollow who has filed a complaint should have their phone service back. And if they don't meet that deadline, I suggest real financial pressure on them. Again, 10 years of unreliable phone service, I wouldn't mind a check for $10,000 for the $1,000 I've been paying here, and that's probably unreasonable. But the second part of what I'd like for you to do, whenever the phone services resort, is make sure that they write us all checks for the service we have not been able to rely upon. They have failed in their ethic responsibility to give us the basic service that we pay for and that we should be provided. I will mention one neighbor, she was out for nearly a month, called for a credit after finally getting her service back, and was refunded $14. finally getting her service back and was refunded fourteen dollars, and this has been my experience as well. So again, in review, give them a hard deadline and maybe we will see the posse of trucks. If they don't meet that deadline for restoring service to all of us, then they need to start paying us back. And then third, I would like to see payment back to all of us for a sketchy service over all these years. And I really do appreciate your focus on that. Again, not so much for me, but for the neighbors on whose behalf I'm speaking who lack backup in the form of reliable Wi-Fi call. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes.
I'll talk loud from here if it's all right. I would like to address the behavior, I'm sorry, I'm Heidi Lizinski with the Hampton District. I'd like to address the behavior of one of your members at the meeting this afternoon. Since I was brought up by this individual, I feel the need to set the record straight. Ron Frazier put in a FOIA request to the members of the BOS under the guise of seeing how many people contacted members in support of either of two candidates to the planning commission for the Piedmont District. Rather than focus on the forty-plus calls and emails that John Lizinski received on the matter and the many more received by other members of the board and then voting on the matter, as was on the agenda for the second month in a row, he used his position on the board to point out just one call, mine. I've been a taxpayer in this community since January 2003. John Lizinski is my supervisor. Am I not entitled to a voice, an opinion, just like every other member in this community? Mr. Frazier has suggested time and again that it has been the tradition of the board of supervisors to rubber stamp the candidate put forward by the supervisor in that district. If this, if there's true merit to that symptom, that system of decision-making, why then is it in the county code that all members of the board of supervisors vote at all? Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not married to John, but I'm in love with John.
Adieu, John.
And John knows about this case because he's been bitten up by the cops many times many different things. But sometime ago when I moved to the county, I didn't know anybody, nobody, except my best friend who moved. And so when you move to a place that identifies yours or come here or been here, you feel somewhat vulnerable. My family fought in World War II, my family fought in World War II, I fought in Vietnam, my son fought in Iraq. And I don't feel like I'm going to come here to this country. I moved here after being an attorney in Washington for thirty odd years, working for a billionaire. My job is to teach them how to litigation. I would rather throw money out my window than pay a lawyer, you know, whatever. But we had a problem and so John McCarthy told me, Doc, if you, zoning is ruled by, it's complaint-driven, and if you don't put in a complaint, nothing's going to happen. So we went to the trouble of putting in a fifteen-page complaint, if there were a number of different areas. We even went and hired a lawyer, ten thousand bucks. The county, the county decided after eighty-nine days, one day short of their commitment to deny everything, heard Doc, I wrote the memo. Our attorney said that we could go back and sue the county, it'd cost me twenty thousand bucks, not a small amount, but it would cost you folks more and me more. And so we decided not to litigate, even though we were told by our attorney was a slam dunk because I would, you and I would basically be suing ourselves. And then if we, and then if the court, as was told to us, would rule in our favor, we would get nothing except that the zoning law would have been upheld. The zoning law, from the time John McCarthy got a job here, said that if you want a building permit, you get a zoning permit. A zoning permit is a critical, critical juncture for all planners because it tells everybody exactly what you're going to do with that property. And we've got, we've got one of our people, Dr. Adna Singh, who's owning three properties in this county and is not a resident, who has residential building permits in these multi-million dollar places that she could dream of anything she wants, if, if zoning allowed it. Well, zoning doesn't allow it and she's got residential building permits and she's not doing anything with it. I'm worried about that. I'm worried about that someone could just like pass a zoning amendment and say, oh, they can have a hospice there. Right below us, she built a ten-bedroom with elevators, two kitchens, two break rooms for a residential building permit. She doesn't even live here. I mean, what can we do about this? Can we litigate? I don't want to litigate against anybody here, never, never, never. But I'm an ex-Marine and pay tax is better than sex for some of us. And if the law is not being followed, then ultimately we will litigate. And I don't want to do that against me or against you or against my county. I love this county. I've only been here like four years and I love the people here, they're so good and I just, Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving me a little bit of time. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anyone else here to speak?
I want to speak just a few minutes about the need for this very low pageing tower. This consideration is ongoing. The need for a paging tower in western end of the county is clear. Our current low-band paging system is becoming increasingly obsolete. At times, Pat or several of my responders get no page at all and have no indication they need to respond. Without a working paging system, you may call 911 for EMS or fire and no one will respond. So I'd like to talk just a little bit about the two potential sites, as far as I know there are only two. One's the Stillhouse Hollow Lane site. That site offers good coverage for the square area. However, access for construction would be difficult and consequently, I believe, expensive for the county. In addition, the availability of reliable connection to the broader system to get a page there to the paging tower is unknown and likely difficult. The proposed CWS tower site, if this site pans out, it can offer good coverage for a fraction of the cost that the Stillhouse site. CWS would like to cover most of the cost of developing the site and provide the reliable connection for the rest of the paging system. So I know your county administrator and others are doing good work on this, just encourage that that move forward as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Paige Lynn, Jackson District. Discuss the Bragg versus board supervisor case. Question I have is, well, first I want to separate the county and the individual respondents. So my question is, what is the upside of continuing for the county? Where does the county win out in this? They can't really lose. The only thing we can lose as a county is money. Individual respondents, the upside, is they might get a political benefit because they will not found guilty. My question is, why should the county subsidize that individual benefit? And if that is really the case, should they not recuse from that decision? Questions, something to consider. Thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak?
Name's Mike Luke, Piedmont District. I live on Woodward Road, across from where the CWS is thinking about putting in tower. I hadn't planned on talking tonight, but in response to your comments, as a former first responder, professional first responder, I understand the importance of communications. There's no question about that. I do agree there should be something, somewhere in the western area, but I still have a problem with CWS putting a tower less than eight hundred feet directly across from my daughter's house and my property. I've expressed this concern, I think it was last month, planning commission, last month as well, and four and five years ago. I think that it should be looked at at other locations that would work. You can't convince me that looking at two, only two locations is doing due diligence. There is a lot of open land in this county. There's probably a lot of people in this town that wouldn't mind having a couple extra bucks of money in their pockets. And I would like to see, well, I'd like to see the tower for the paging, I just don't want CWS in my front door. And that's exactly what it's going to be. And I would ask that you all look at other locations for the CWS tower, the paging tower can be a part of, just not within eight hundred feet, straight into our front door. And that's exactly what it would be. I mean, there's no if, ands, ors, or buts about it. It comes straight into the door, the front living room windows, the front porch and the side screen porch. So I would ask that, that you hold off on any paging tower decisions until such time as something can be done about CWS and ask them to look at other locations. As I stated, I think it was last month or at the planning commission, I can't remember, the, four years ago when CWS came through here with AT&amp;T, it was imperative that there was a site at the school for the one on Woodward Road to work. When the one, if the school was voted down, nothing ever happened to the one on Woodward Road because it just would not be efficient or just be a, at that time it was a pole, sticking up and not having much efficiency. What has changed to allow CWS or CWS to want to put a tower back there again? So I, nothing, there's no power in sight, nowhere in sight, and I know the CWS representative at the planning commission last week said blind sight's not an issue, she's just flat out wrong. Cell tower communications require a blind sight. Same thing with paging tower, it requires some type of blind sight that we've done, and you may have, you know, I'm not hearing anything, that we've done testing that either one of the two locations off of Woodward Road, make sure that it would work efficiently at either one of those and meet the needs of the county emergency system. Or are there other places to look at? I'd like to see a little bit of time spent and the due diligence done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Oh, yes.
I'm near Ramos, Hampton District. I live on Mitchman Road and I came home today after not being here for a week and my CenturyLink landline is dead. This is not the first time or the last time. I've not had the same problems as some other people. It hasn't been continuous. Usually if people come out and work on it fairly rapidly, but the fact is, it happens. I've lived other places and not had the kind of problems I've had up here. I have friends in Castleton that say the same thing about their service out there, that they're constantly fighting with it. I ran a business from our home for a time and that was a problem. My friends run a business from their home and that is a problem for them. So please put the, these companies put their feet to the fire about making sure that we have access to telephone. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? Is there anyone that hasn't spoken yet? I'll declare the public comment closed.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, first of all, the funds are really important and I'm really glad to see some of other board members stepping up to the plate and taking care of that. I think that Smith brought it up to start with and I know Mitch Lizinski's been really involved in looking into this and we do need to apply, so I figured out a way to apply pressure on these companies to keep our lines open because we all know that even if you have cell service, if there is a big emergency, the funds, the cell funds shut down. And the other thing I want to talk about is the lawsuit. And Mr. Wilson, you just shut me down if I go overboard.
We do have an item on the agenda coming up.
About that?
Yeah.
I'll let you go.
Anybody else to comment?
I just wanted to add that the earlier discussion that was FOIA action was for the planning commission seat in Jackson District, not Piedmont District.
Oh, you're right.
Okay, public safety, fire rescue, paging system, western towns, select time.
Mr. Chair, I place this on the agenda as I have in the last several meetings, not knowing whether there would be any direction from the board coming out of your discussion in closed meetings.
Mr. Chairman, because I think that we do have the two, two sites, potential sites that we're looking at off of Woodward Road. I was approached earlier about someone that has a property further up to eleven, that would be a minimal that we can direct, so that we have to talk to them, I guess. But we can only deal with the sites that we're looking at. The one site that the county is looking at on its own and the site that CWS has written that had remained, print spacing. I'm not sure how to handle suggesting other sites to them. I don't know that that's even legitimate thing that this board can do. But anyway, I think while we're trying to put together our plans for moving forward with our public safety concerns, that we find out what those true costs may be and I believe that it would be beneficial if we had Mr. Curry and Mr. Golf have continued talks with CWS and see what exactly those costs may be if we were to utilize space on their tower, provided the course of the tower would be properly permitted and cited. But if it's being in the form of a motion, you can do that, but it's kind of hard to make comparisons without having a cost. to make comparisons without having a cost.
It seems like that one site does serve a lot of purposes, including being probably the most economical for the county. I, it is extremely unfortunate that the location is concerned, so it is from involved. And the, that property, though, is, is big property. They go all the way over to 231. And so they are dealing with that one landowner and we got the one company, CWS. And I don't think it's unreasonable to at least ask CWS to look hard at another site on that property, dealing with the same landowner, that even though it may cost a little more money to put the road in, to at least explore that. So in that vein, I'll second Mr. Frager's motion.
But just clarifying, I don't think we should be asking him to look at other potential sites.
Well, when I say sites, I'm talking about the property, the tax map.
Other property owners.
Yes, the taxes, maps, so and so, same site, same property.
That's a great point.
But, you know, what the hell, they can move it 10 feet or they can move it, you know, 10,000 feet, it can still be on the same property. And so that's, that's, I think at least it's worth an effort to ask them to look at that.
I think that's a different. I'm thinking not two miles up the road on different.
No, I'm thinking the same property, the same kind of place, parcel.
I think you're, I think you're okay, yeah. I'm, I'm agree with you.
So we have a motion, we have a statement. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, follow those names. Next item is a discussion of Board of Supervisors for the Bragg case.
He says that no, no place on the agenda, not knowing if the board want to have any discussion. Mr. Golf, it's a busy day tomorrow, I asked him to stay back just in case you had any questions for him and Mr. Frager, you were just talking about.
Yeah, like I said, Golf, stop me if I'm getting into areas that are going to be detrimental to the case. But it would be nice to drop the case, it would be nice if Mr. Conick would drop the case. I know that he has an incentive to, to keep it going because he's fearful of sanctions in the event that he loses. And I would not be opposed to an exchange for his dropping the case, that we would guarantee that we would come after. It's my personal speaking, a personal opinion.
He's already tossed that out.
Mr. Frager?
The sanctions?
Uh, I'm just, Judge Sworstie already denied that. Uh, no, it's going to be reheared on a local level.
Mr. Look asked for that and Mr. Sworstie already said no.
Well, I can just want to go ahead a little bit.
No, I'm just sorry.
I mean, yeah. I'm wondering why you have to interrupt me rather than wait till I finish and then.
Well, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know if we need to go down that road if it's already happened.
Let's not argue.
Isn't it not true, Mr. Golf, that in the event this goes to the local court, that in the event that Mr. Conick loses, that the county would be able to go after Mr. Conick for sanctions?
As I recall, there was a two-part sanction motion, part of which, if memory serves, had to do with the initial draft number one. And I believe that Mr. Frager's right on that part, that the, that the judge denied the sanctions at that time, although we're talking about, you know, that's been back in January of last year. But I do think there is still some, there's a lot of motions pending, there's a lot that are still pending. I mean, we haven't, we haven't filed an answer on the grounds of defense yet. So all that's been decided in the court, or the Supreme Court, was the judge's ruling on the sufficiency of the affidavits, as we all know. We're, we're still back at, like the case was filed two weeks ago, in terms of.
Right, it's just been remaining to the local courts.
Right. So whether there's a sanctions motion out there still pending, I mean, I've got three books this tall of papers, I'd have to check and see. But I do think there may be a sanctions motion still pending, but I, I'd have to check.
Whether, whether that be the case or not, the, the purpose of the suit was to keep us from hiring a county attorney. That was the, basically the last line in the case that said, put an injunction on our hiring of county attorney. And there was a rumor out that we were planning on hiring a certain individual. And, and I think that, you know, that certain people didn't like that idea and that was, that was the purpose of the law case. In the meantime, we hired Mr. Golf. And so that rendered all that part of the suit moot. And so there is no real reason to, to keep it going. I guess I would like for a judge to, I resent the fact that my reputation is being attentioned upon. I'm certain that we didn't do anything wrong, we did not do anything wrong in the closed session or violate FOIA. And I just, I want the public to know that. And, you know, that's right. If we, you know, ask to drop the suit, then it's going to look like, oh, yeah, they'll be able to, and that's not the case. And so if, I, I would like to reverse the table and ask the county to drop the lawsuit. And that can be really easy. Be a lot easier.
Anyone else to comment?
Well, the thing is, like Mr. Golf said, we're about where we were a year and a half ago, but we spent $40,000 or more of the county's tax dollars to get there.
For nothing, for nothing.
Well, we couldn't make that decision a long time ago. We could've just said, let's argue the merits of the case and see if they have any merits. But this board decided not to.
I was, I don't know about that.
Well, how did we get there then if this board didn't decide?
Our attorneys.
Did we do what the attorneys do or did we just take their advice?
We took their advice on this, in this case. I mean.
And we decided.
It was not judge, and maybe the judge decided that, I mean, Mr. Golf probably doesn't really have an idea what happened, but the judge decided that, that the case, because of that affidavit, the case was not presented.
Well, that's, that's correct. We were in a position of, we had peripheral argument about the sufficiency of the affidavit. And Judge Sworstie, I think, kind of surprised us as well as the other side with his ruling. But once we had that win, we had to defend it. So that's what happened and, you know, the Supreme Court disagreed with our position or with Judge Sworstie's position and sent it back down here. But we are at the stage right now where we got some preliminary motions that have to be done, like the move this question. A lot of this stuff is going to be cleaned off the case. I don't want to get too much into the strategy because I've got individual defendants that I need to brief. And so I would prefer to leave the tactical discussions to the individual defendants, who's an X around on the, on the line here. As to what the board decides to do, that's certainly, you know, that's the board's decision. But you do also have the individual defendants to contend with as well.
Well, yeah, we have several defendants for.
Including Mr. Bennet, who's no.
Yeah, right. And then we've only got one person that's suing, which is Ms. Bragg and her lawyer, Mr. Conick. And it'd be a whole lot easier for one person to decide to drop it than for four people to decide to drop it. So I would like to see Mr. Conick take that initiative and help out his beloved county.
Well, for all practical purposes, only three members of this board, because Mr. Bennet has no decision-making powers anymore. So it's extra.
Well, he does have the decisions for, he's going to settle personally.
Well, that may be because as far as this board going forward, the board is using taxpayer dollars to pay for the litigation. So, and I, and I haven't given much thought, but Mr. Bennet said over here, what is the county's position? That's, I think, what we have to decide, whether we do it here tonight or whether y'all do it independently and, and come back and later, later meet the cycle. That is, what is the county's position? If we're being sued as a board and as individual respondents, our, our first line of business that we have to be concerned with is what is the county's position? If the county has no real winner or loser here, then what are we doing? Whether it's this case or the second case? That's a good question. I, I, it's not my question, I'm just repeating what I just heard, it's a good question.
Well, it's a very good question. And actually, I like how Mr. Frager, our personal reputations are on the line here. We're being accused of, being accused of what, malfeasance, crimes.
Is it ego?
Beholding, no. Reputation is not ego. Reputation is your, is your professional standing in the community.
I understand that, I'm asking questions because.
Being challenged, is being challenged by Ms. Bragg. And I beg to differ. And I will, I'd choose to defend myself against those accusations.
Did you read the statute?
Yes, I read the statute. I'm not going to go to trial with you right now, Mr. Frager. I'll just try this case.
Excuse me, gentlemen, but my position is not guilty. Does anything else need to be said?
If you read the statute, Mr. Chairman, it may be.
Not guilty is doing that. They don't need more time to think about this.
I think if everybody would go home and read the statute, we might come to a different
On that note, I would just add what I had in a private discussion earlier this month is, you know, if we were a patient, we would get a second opinion. We have Mr. Golf thankfully leading us in this. Mr. Ruth will likely be involved in the case as a witness eventually. And I just think that a fresh perspective that may lead to a resolution might be a less expensive, less aggressive route for all parties involved. I don't know if that's something this board will consider, but I think it would be a route to possibly resolve the situation or at least get a new viewpoint that might benefit this board.
All right, next item. Okay, next item. deteriorating landline.
They have one last item, and this is, in the update for the public, the board has informed most of this information. As the board and public notice, the board leadership, the Public Safety Committee, Ms. Smith, drafted letters to the State Corporation Commission, Senator Robert Shane, Delicate Webber, Verizon, and Centrillink, those letters were sent off and actually have begun bearing some fruit. I spoke with Delicate Webber's legislative aide, who immediately got us in contact with Verizon, meeting this week with Verizon, which I believe Ms. Smith is going to join me and, and another board member can join me as well if you're free. Extended that opportunity. No more than two, please. So that's very positive. Unfortunately, we've not engaged with Century Link at this time. I have spoken with the SEC, however, and that conversation led to our push to the community to provide administration with information. We need to know, know of citizens who have issues with their landlines, what their phone number is, what kind of issues they have.
It's actually not that dissimilar, it's the way that it's served.
And the length of time it takes to restore service. And this is all to help the SEC build a case on our behalf. So if we cannot engage with Century Link at the appropriate levels, we don't know what our engagement with Verizon, whether it'll bear fruit or not, but at least we have the right people coming to the table, then the SEC has a considerable leverage with these companies and we're hopeful that that route will be, will bear fruit. So at this point, the SEC has said, help me build a case. And so that's why we sent a call out through Rapnet, Facebook Rapnet, and then the paper placed it on the front page. So all the citizens who will watch this video in the future, send your information in, we will compile it, we will get it to the SEC. And I believe that that is our single greatest opportunity to drive Century Link. They have the real regulatory power and they are actively engaged with us right now, so I think that's very positive. Other than, well, I believe we're up to about 70 responses.
Yeah, I think they must do some sort of temporary band-aid because usually when it rains, I lose, so on Beattie Road, but with all this rain, we didn't lose it once.
And so maybe they're getting around it. It might. I've met some of our Century Link repair techs and, you know, my general opinion is they're, they're working hard and, you know, doing the best they can, but they're woefully and their staff under-equipped.
I would believe that.
And they just, they can't do it. You know, they know that the entire line needs to be replaced, but they're given three band-aids or a duct tape. So we need the right people within the organization to cause some action to occur and I'm hopeful the SEC can drive it.
It's, it's not a, it's not a field question, it's a upper level management level issue. It's, it's not out in the field. They're not saying it out in the field.
Do we have any point of clarification? Are you saying FCC or?
State, State Corporation Commission.
Gotcha, okay.
Same.
Do we have any idea Verizon versus Century Link, where the problems are in terms of the 70 responses that we received?
When it was at 50 people, we were about split. But there are pockets and Lauren is gathering the information in the office and, you know, there's a Woodville component and the Git Brown component, there's these different pockets and they have different issues of what happens and when.
I want to thank Mr. Whitson for coming out tonight and carrying, carrying the war for his neighbors up there at Harris Hollow. Anita, thank you for sharing your, your thoughts on Century Link. Obviously, thank Ms. May for assembling all of the emails and phone calls that are coming into her for this. Unfortunately, I'm out, I'm out of town on Thursday, won't be able to join with Ms. Smith. Hope one of the other board members can do that. I will be, I'm down in Richmond and I will be with the senior executive at Century Link who happens to serve on the board with me. So I will be sure to take that opportunity to let him vent his ear on what is happening up here in my county. Not that he has any direct authority, but who knows?
Well, if he knows that the next call to his peer will be from the SEC, he may choose to make the call himself.
So, so do we have response from any other, have you passed a resolution, letters?
I have not heard from anybody from Senator Robert Shane's office nor Century Link.
Either one of you two gentlemen, Mr. Frager, if you're, both want to make that big, what time of day is?
I can make it. You said Thursday? Yeah. What time?
10:00.
10:00.
Play a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is that acceptable? All of you say to say aye?
Aye.
All of you say to say a night?